Somehow I'm making do.
The fifty-nine was an insane amount. All of us. Like the longest one ever.
Right. The council work session for Tuesday, July twenty-third to order. We've been on a site visit out to the Stables Village McCain Parcel Block eleven. And we got some information from staff, but we did not have any discussion or make any decisions. So we will have more on that later. So we'll start with the open space signage plan.
Good afternoon, Mary Owens and Town Council. My name's Alex Stack. I'm the coordinator with the town's open space and trails program. As part of our master plan revision process that we started a few years ago, we're working on a new trails plan, which will help guide our new trail construction and retro fitting projects going forward. Part of that trails plan is is giving us an opportunity or a blank slate to look at our signage within our trail system. And we really want to just take a look at best practices and just use this opportunity to really rethink the wayfinding and navigation within our system. And a part of that process, we released an RFP in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. We had quite a bit of respondents. And then from that point, staff finalized the shortlist, which we brought to a selection committee composed of open space and trail staff, Mark Truckee and Jay Beckerman. From that point, we we interviewed a couple of different firms, spoke to references and finalized our decision to go with Merge, a design firm based out of West Chester, Pennsylvania, specializes in signage wayfinding in parks and towns throughout the country. We're really impressed with their proposal, their references. Yeah, without further ado, I'll introduce John Bosio and Madison Phillips, who are going to give a quick presentation on the process that they're going to be going through this week and the next couple of months. Thanks.
Thanks, Alex.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. Again, I'm John Bosio with Merge. We are here to just give you an introduction to the project. We started today. We had our we had our our tour today with with Tony and Alex and we'll continue tomorrow. We have meetings with stakeholders and continue to tour and do other things to as we move through this. So just real quick on Merge, we are environmental graphic design firm and we focus on wayfinding. And we do that for cities, parks and trails, campuses and transit. Our main focus really is communities and park and trails. These are just some of the places that we've worked with throughout the country. Hopefully, we can bring a lot of lessons learned as we go through this process. You know, one of the first things when I talked to the group in our interview was I just put mountain climate conditions like right up front. Like before we got into the individual signs or anything like that, we just wanted to make sure that you realize that we realize that there are really specific conditions that we need to look at as we go through this. We did do the Whistler wayfinding program, which included the village as well as the Valley Trail and the flood system. So we have similar projects that we've worked with and developed signage programs for. So we look at the functional aspect of the system, both in the winter and in the summer, right? As we're out there today on a Tuesday morning and we go out to the trails and there's lots of people out there. So we realized that not only winter, but summer is an important part of this design. Vertical configuration, get things up off the ground, the snow clearing access and protection. So there's lots of functional things that we will look at as we go through the actual design of the signs. We also reveal, we also know about the maintenance part of this. So as we talk to staff, things that can be done in-house or have to be contracted out, what kind of materials currently work now? Are there new materials that we should look at as we go through this? That is all part of this process. You know, these are just some examples of what we're talking about when we look at visibility in multiple conditions. We were not probably going to have illumination on this project, but it is sort of a visibility issue. Getting the signs up off the ground. Again, some I'm showing all these with sort of winter and summer conditions. Durable and locally sourced material. So that's stuff that we will look at. We looked at a lot of the kiosks that are out there and some of the six by six posts. You do use Corten as well on some of them, on some of the signs, and that tends to weather well. This is a good example of, you know, just using locally sourced material, in this case, the basalt. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there real quick as we got into the design. I think as we went through the project issues, you know, sort of the branding and identity of of the system and how we bring that into the design, definitely reducing signage clutter. We were taking all kinds of pictures today where you pull up to a gate and there's seven or eight signs and three of them say the same exact thing. We want to start to co-locate that information. I should always say that we do not build signs. Okay, we're not here to sell you more signs. We're designers and planners and we're trying to do it with the least amount of signs as possible. Etiquette, rules, regulatory, emergency information, those are things that we'll talk about as we go through the program. I know there's the existing etiquette signs that are out there as well, and where does that fall into the overall plan? That's a piece of the component as well. And then we want to incorporate pictograms, right? So that's the you do a lot of that now on the totems. That is a very quick and easy way to get information across, especially when you have international visitors like you do. That is a good incorporation into the design. As we talk about the material selection, kiosks, having we looked at the kiosks and how we could better repurpose some of those, maybe add panels to it. We'll talk about when we go, as we go through the process, what sort of the program of those kiosks, like what kind of information should be up there? The maps that are there now are not heads up, right? So what you're looking at might be behind you and then you got to turn it in your head, which is harder. So our scope does include the design of a map and we will give it to you heads up. So based on the location, you turn it and then that what's in front of you is at the top and you can tell what's to your left and to your right. Interpretive information. So you sort of drill down. Digital strategy, you know, we'll look at, can we include QR codes? What other kind of technical or digital aspects can we bring into into the program? You know, when we think about wayfinding, people often think that Madison and I come into town and we run around and we put up signs everywhere. That's not what we do. Signs are a big part of it, which we're going to look at, but we really think about it holistically. So for the moment, someone decides to come to Breckenridge and they're going to use the trails, what kind of information do they get online? You know, I downloaded the app, you know, for the trails, you know, how is that a component of this overall program? The environment and the spaces, you know, that's how we all find our way around to certain places. Whether you're walking down a corridor and you say turn left at a water fountain or you're out on the trail and you're using natural elements to give you a landmark, that's how. So we can't change those things, but we want to bring those into the thought process. Support information, things like printed maps and guides, right? That's all wayfinding. So we want to make sure that as we're doing things, the maps are talking to the signage. We're using the same terminology, the same graphic language. It will build trust to the user, right? So trust is a huge part of of wayfinding. And then the signage, right? The physical nature of physical elements that we're going to be designing. There's access points, there's pedestrian and bike signs, informational signs as well as interpretive elements. So they will all be looked at as we go through this. So just examples, things like trail sign and trailhead signage. One of the things that I noticed when we were out there today is there's like a lack of awareness of where all the trailheads may be, just even when you're driving by in car, right? Usually you want to trigger somebody that, oh, I may not be going there right now. But if I see a sign there that's recognizable for the trails, oh, I can come back and access it at this point. So those are things you can start to think about, not only just on the trail itself. Kiosks, we talked about those. That's certainly a structure that's going to stay in place and we'll look at maybe what the information is that's on there. You know, the map, not only a map of the full system, but I think in some cases, just having a map of a clearer, sort of simpler map of the area that you're in. I don't really need to know what's three miles away. If I'm not going, if I'm, if I don't sort of connect to that, where am I sort of maybe in this little loop area that I'm I'm at? You know, you can start to zoom in on that and get additional information like pictograms and, you know, how all those things are designed into the map. Like we said, pedestrian vehicular signage out on the trail, you'll see the etiquette sign at the bottom there. You know, using pictograms, these are a little bit bigger than what you guys have. Yours are like three by three, but we'll look at at that as well. You know, and just directing to things that are nearby. So there may be some trails where you want to connect to another trail or you want to connect to a destination. It's not just what's the trail uses. It also can be directing to something that's adjacent. This is a photo I put in all of our trail presentations. It's Atlanta Beltline. I always just think that it captures what we're trying to do in a sense that it fits into that environment. But from a distance, it tells me that there's an intersection coming up with that pop of color that I can spot from a distance. But it's not too intrusive. It's it's that vertical element that has information. Once, once I get to it and I can and sort of read it. Like I said, pictograms and including that on the on the design. You know, how that really helps us keep information down or keep the sign panels down. I think getting people to trails, you know, not, you know, from a distance might be something you may think about as well. And here you could see how they're used utilized on pedestrian signs. This is park signage, which is outside of our scope, but I thought I would include it, just showing you how you can sort of brand it. Also use pictograms. And then you guys have the etiquette signs that are out there, but this is just another example. Definitely trying to etiquette signs, you're trying, what you're trying to do is set that tone, which is good. And we'll see how that gets incorporated as we go through this as well. This is like signage clutter example, the before and after of how you take signage clutter where you have, you know, five or six signs and try and get it into co-locate it into a single, really clean it up. It's the same exact information on the right and on the left. We even we even added in the Whistler brand to the bottom to it, but it's just taking all that information and coming up with layouts that we can really co-locate information. We may go into telling your story. I know there's a lot of interpretive signs, maybe just give guidelines for that going into the future as to, you know, what are some of the stand industry standards for designing those types of elements? This one is Spanish on it. So I know there's been a little bit of talk. We'll probably learn more tomorrow about bilingual information. So as we get more into this, we'll figure out if that's a requirement and where that requirement might might land. You know, and just telling people not only just the history, but what you can do when you're in town. You can think of other additional tools that aren't signage. So again, digital tools that might tell a story, give you a tour. In-ground elements. Crosswalks. Landmark elements. So it's not to say we're going to do all these things in Breckenridge. But as we go into sort of this master plan sort of assessment, we just try to think of everything that we can as we go through it. We may come out of the first phase with, you know, twenty recommendations. You may decide to do all twenty, you may decide to do two. That's a discussion that'll happen based on priorities and funding and that's. Just lastly, just where we are in the methodology that we're going through. So I'll zoom in on this. We are at these first first three steps where we're doing an assessment of the conditions and we will say that these are the issues. These are some recommendations and we also will start to show schematic design, basically like three concepts. And then we'll get feedback from the various groups on the different designs as we go through it. Ultimately, we'll move into programming. So what's that? That's where all this, where we figure out where the signs go and what they say. So for this project, we'll be doing a range of guidelines of different conditions, different situations that are out there and what types of signs might be necessary. And then we will do a pilot area of say twenty-five to thirty-five signs to say, okay, here's a spot where you could try this, try this out. And then over time, that guideline is used to implement different pieces of the program throughout. Design development really is once we select a, once a design is approved, we have to, in schematics, we're showing you five, six, seven sign types. You're going to have a lot more than that. That's sort of spreading it across all of those elements. And then we, as part of this contract, we will have documentation. So you will get from us a documentation manual that has all the specifications, materials, construction details and those kind of things associated with each of the sign types. You will then roll that out over time based on priorities and, you know, maybe new construction of trails or replacement of things that have hit their lifespan and that would be the the implementation. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Did you have anything to add while at the beginning to set the tone or?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I want to just say how much we appreciate John and Madison for being here and the fact that, you know, through the interviews, we really saw that they are specialists, right? That they are the surgeons that specialize on this part, you know, and they go in with precision. And specializing in wayfinding is something that was really apparent from your presentations, from your references, from all the work that you've done. Other things that really stood out that weren't mentioned is the material comparison budgets and looking at cost and lifespan really resonated with the with the group going, these guys, they not only want to present us with a plan, but they want it to be implemented and for something that will be there for the for the long term. And then something that really hit me was the discussion on major decision points versus secondary decision points. And how many of those do we have, right? You know, you look at the B and B trailhead and then you look at all the offshoots there and how different they are and they're not treated equally. And these guys just really, really get that. And so I'm so excited for your interviews tomorrow and the stakeholder engagement. And so appreciative that you're here in person and really have boots on the ground and already had, you know, what been in town for a couple hours and already taken the tour and seen a lot of trails. So I appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks. Welcome to Breck. Super excited about the project. It's going to be an exciting update to our system. I'm curious, you know, we've got an awesome partner here in the Upper Blue Basin in the county. You know, we're lucky to have awesome staff here and 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 also a robust open space program at the town. You know, when I'm out recreating, I don't know where the line is between the town of Breck, the county and joint owned parcel. So I'm curious, like, as this evolves, like, is this going to be for the whole Upper Blue Basin? Like, where do we draw the line? And even just thinking out like French gout, right? Like, that's a mix of county and town and some joint ownership, like. I would think, at least in my own head, it's.
That was our question, too. I think the first trail Tony took us to today was a summit, you know, it was more Summit County than it was Breck.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess I'm curious, how do we solve that? Because I think from all this work that's, you know, obviously you've got your specialists and it's incredible work. It's like, I feel like it's important to figure out. I mean, when you think about Breckenridge, I think it's the Upper Blue. So how do we get the county on board? Are they on board? Where are they at?
Well, I feel like, I feel like this is exactly kind of something that we want you guys to consider throughout the process is that we have so many different ownership patterns. We have the Forest Service. Then we also have like partnership orgs that are Breck History or Breck Creative Arts. And so I guess that's just one of the many things we're hoping you'll continue to consider is how we all. And if nobody goes in with us, then how do we make it look cohesive?
We think about things as we go through the design process very much along a spectrum of, right? If they get everybody agree, it can look like this, but only half of them agree it looks like this, if nobody, you know, and then that's sort of the things that we start to consider.
Yeah.
That's super. And so those groups will be at the table, like the county, I think, Jay, you had mentioned the county's going to be there, Breck History, BCA. So those groups will be involved in the process.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, Alex. Appreciate that.
I mean, I would also add kind of what's our plan for heading down, you know, with this engagement with the Rim Walk and Norris Design. You know, we worked on a site master plan years ago with the intent of a phase two. And this is more roads and, you know, people coming into town, the in-town piece, but it it really should all play together. I think so.
Yeah, just having that awareness of those other plans that are out there already and not that we've really signed up to do any of those signs, but that we they should be considered as part of the overall process, I think.
Maybe something we as this group need to talk about. And maybe have a work session, a agenda item is, you know, just revisiting that my sign master plan for the in-town piece.
Before we came in, the back part of our tour, we were looking at the in-town trail network and how you get people from the core out to those, or at least make them aware of it, you know?
So, yeah, I mean, that might be worth us sooner or closer to later talking about.
That's great.
So it's all cohesive.
Yeah, agreed.
And thank you for working with the county because that, you know, our land isn't, doesn't go as far as theirs. And a lot of the trailheads are on their, you know, on their land and but it's all part of the basin. So thank you for working on that.
But we paid.
Steve, do you have anything?
No, I'm just hoping that as you are just going from point A to point B, see something that's really stupid. Let us know, you know, make a little note, even though it may not be part of your direct process because we have what we have and nobody's really been in here doing this with us. I think it's a great opportunity to review the whole town.
Yeah, I just was going to add very impressive proposal. I like your building and touchpoints with us and it's very important and it's just your perspective, I think, is good. Lucy just walked in, you know, the BTO is another organization to partner with as well. But I, you know, the the budget concerned me a little because it seemed vague to me, you know, with a lot of extras. So I, you know, quantifying some of, you know, exactly what's included in the scope by is I just always, you know, I hate leaving that loose and wiggly is, you know, is to not have things. That was all, but really impressive. I I really enjoyed reading your proposal.
Yeah. Marika? This might be more of a question for Tony and Alex, but I know you can't possibly look at every trail signpost that we have in this town. So I'm assuming your, like, the documentation you leave us, will that explain how we clean up our own posts going forward? Like, how to prioritize pictographs or?
Yes. Yeah, that's actually something we we talked about when we were out there today of like, in what order do they go and that sort of thing?
And it will kind of be a template that we can use for all of the.
Yeah, we won't be going to every single sign. Yeah. We can go if you want us to.
It might be a challenge to see if staff could find every single sign.
Well, actually, there's a GIS, I think they could talk to more of that, where a lot of the stuff is, which I think is great for you because as we go through the design with that GIS of what's out there, it gives you a quantity. So now that we have that quantity and we have a design, now we could put that together for like an order of magnitude pricing, that how many kiosks are there? Well, if we were going to replace all of them, they would be this. But if we're just going to replace the panel, it would be your number. But you have that, the quantity is the tough part to get to. But you have it, at least it starts.
And I'm also wondering if you have, if you will, by the end of this week, maybe have a sense of how long this whole rollout could take, like for us to get all of our signs updated, for us to get appropriate QR codes and new maps and making sure all of our maps are the same.
We don't have that by the end of the week, but you will, we will have a phased approach because I think we have to talk to a lot of people to see what the priorities are. I think we also, it's like priorities and then when funding is available and then you try to match that up because there might be, like when we did Whistler, we didn't, we were like barely into design and they just redid all their maps. Like, that was like a quick and easy thing. They were ready to do it because they were starting to run out. So that we just sort of did the maps real quick, or not real quick, but we did the maps first and they rolled that out as a priority. It was a simple, easy way to do that while the rest of the project sort of moved along. Maybe that's something that might happen here.
Well, it seems like you guys have thought of everything and more than we could even ask questions on. So we're excited to work with you. I did have one more comment on the kiosks. You said, obviously, they would stay with maps in them. And I would just say that in Breck, we love innovation. And if you feel we don't need kiosks or kiosks should be in different areas, we aren't really. I think we've even talked about getting rid of all the kiosks here because of the struggles that you talked about not being heads up and being too much information and things. So I just look forward to seeing the innovation really and hoping that you guys can think outside the box and help us out. But it sounds like you're the right team for that. So thanks very much.
Great. Thank you.
One last thought, I encourage you to look at the Be Like Breck campaign that our tourism office is doing, if you haven't, right? Cool.
We got the app already.
I got it.
We're in the visitor center just now.
Thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to planning commission decisions. They had some Bieber Run signage discussion, very timely. Everyone good on that? Legislative review mid-year.
I had one other comment on planning, just just seeing that we're giving relief to another twenty-four A or recommending to. It just continues to make me feel urgent about getting that one tidied up and and put to bed. So just just keep setting all this precedent and it's worrisome for me.
Understood.
And we do plan to have EPS here at the second meeting in August to give an overview and answer questions about their report.
Awesome.
Great. Okay, thank you. So moving on to legislative review, the mid-year budget. Okay, thank you. So moving on to legislative review, the mid-year budget appropriation, second reading. While Tracy comes down, I'm just gonna say one thing about this. There was an article in the Summit Daily that some of you guys may have seen and we did get some feedback from the public and I just. Wanted to make sure that it was said in public that we analyze all the projects that come through for budgeting and that we're very cautious and we understand the numbers before and that. Sometimes projects are ahead or behind of schedule and that's how the funding needs to be appropriated at mid-year. And then also I did want to clarify a mistake from the Summit Daily that said that 5.3 million in open space was being offset by rental income. Which is not true. Obviously, we have the open space program and a healthy budget in there. So that's where we evaluated the money would come from and is coming from. So. Tracy.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council. I have for the second reading for the appropriation. The details in the packet have not changed from the first reading. So open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the managers' report, public projects update. Kristen.
Hello.
As you can see, we have a lot of construction going on in town right now. Shannon is out of town, so you have me tonight. Um, just a quick update, we had a drainage project come, come up at Plaster Ridge Townhome. So that was kind of an emergency. You'll see that Ridge Street is closed between Park and Tonapaw this week.
Yeah.
Fix the drainage.
Yes. We're adding an inlet closer to the Plaster Ridge Townhomes between the Marriott and Plaster Ridge, so we can collect all that drainage coming out of the Marriott.
Gotcha. Yeah. Any questions for Kristen? Someone who wants to stump her?
Yeah, just a quick update on turf.
Oh, great.
Next week for the North Field. So they're real close. They, the monsoons set them back just a little bit on the afternoons. So. We're hoping by this Friday, but next week for the North Field, the Turf, the South Field is progressing along nicely. Lot of excavation work, drainage already installed. So.
Are we gonna have an inaugural kickball tournament or something next week? Couple weeks out?
Rec Department against you guys.
I don't know.
Council against planning.
That's great news.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of, a lot of weather.
It really looks nice. I walked on it a little bit. Yeah, nice. It's really nice.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
Outside the fence and looked at it. It looked great.
You can walk out there.
When it comes to fiber, you had some information in there and I, I thought I remembered previously we spoke. Maybe years ago when I was on planning about that there would be excess capacity with the fiber and perhaps there would be room to lease it or sell that. Bandwidth to another company that would have interest in using it. But now that, you know, a lot of things I, that I've heard now is that we're running two sets of fiber to like the TV building that's at the 300 block in North Main. Is there, do you foresee or have you been approached at all with anyone that has that desire to share fiber?
Yeah, good question. Um, I would say there's multiple parts to that. We have a lot of capacity in our fiber. So we have, I think we've overdesigned the amount of fiber that we need in that amount that we have going to each part of town. So we have the capacity for future needs, which is really good. I'm not sure that we can, our agreement with ALO, I'm not sure that we can lease our fiber out to any other companies. But we do use dark fiber internally in the town for our own uses, separate from ALO. Another part of that that I think you might be asking is we have multiple conduits in our trenches. So most of the trenches around town have five conduits and we're only using one of those for the fiber. So at the game and cabin where SCTC is going. We do have extra conduits running in front of, you know, from the Comcast vault at French and Maine over to the game and cabin. We have excess conduits. And so we've talked to Comcast about possibly leasing those conduits to them so that they can get Comcast to the game and cabin without trenching in the right way.
Great. Thank you so much.
That's, right now, that's the only person to possibly rent or lease our conduits.
That situation with SCTC is really unique.
And just before we get a letter that overdesigned, the overcapacity, overbuilding, whatever, was by design.
It was.
Always intended.
Yeah, it, it was intended to be overdesigned so that we wouldn't have to go back in at some point and put in more fiber or more conduit.
Because nobody likes road construction.
Exactly. And that was part of the strategic plan. That was one of the lessons learned. Our consultant came in and said, you've really designed this robustly. You don't need as much as you have in there. And so. Going forward, that's something we're looking at. And even in construction this year, we've reduced the conduit in some areas. For example, like windward and corkscrew, we're going from five conduits down to two or three so that we aren't spending as much. We're getting more bang for the buck. We're looking at ways to get to more areas of town.
Probably makes sense, though, to have the whole five in the backbone, which is really all we've laid so far. So it's a good time to transition to the more simplified. Any, anything else? Thank you both very much. Mobility, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mobility update is in your packet. I did wanna. Give some of my perspective on snow staying. I think I had heard a couple of questions about that. So. I think overall, I'm generally supportive of a third year with snow staying in, in town here. I think, I think I have four real, you know, reasons of why. I think. One of the big things in transit, it takes two years or more for a route to establish ridership and to kind of gain its footing. That it really goes for fixed route transit, which we run here in Breckenridge also commuter transit, which is what snow staying and bus staying are. So. I feel confident in, you know, we did see a downturn this year in some ridership, but I really think that was impacted by the weather in January and MLK weekend. They couldn't run the route at all. So. Bit of a loss there. And I think that really took away a lot of the ridership really for the rest of the year. So. That's one of them. I think overall, there's a, and to me, there's a bigger picture in the idea of mobility. Than really just the, the hard dollars that we're spending on the bus service, but also really the riders that are on the bus. The bigger picture is, you know, that bus is out there with our name on it. 365 days a year throughout the mountain corridor, also in the Front Range. You know, showing our commitment to sustainability and alternate modes of transportation. So. There's a lot of people that see that bus out there, not only when it's running snow staying, but also when it's out there, running other routes. Additionally, the snow staying budget, the cost of it is already rolled into our transit budget. So the Breck Free Ride is basically paying for that. And before we even look at. The money that we receive in grants or be it reimbursements from the ski resort for, you know, operating some of their older routes. We're actually running an incredibly efficient service with, you know, as you saw in there, $50 or $57 is the national average of a commuter bus. We run. Fixed route transit, which is about $10 per rider. We're operating right now, year to date, at $5.14 per rider. Which is mind blowing. It's incredibly efficient. I think it's something to be proud of. And just so you know, that the snow staying is rolled up into that number right there. So. I think that we're operating very good in our small town, but we're also being seen on more of a state level with the snow staying bus that's running all the time. So. Those are kind of my reasons for wanting to continue for a third year. Generally speaking, these ski resorts also onboard with their commitment to the program and being a partner with us. Again, coming back to the cost, if it does increase, we may change that tune together. But at this time, I think we're all supportive of the program continuing for a third year.
Thank you very much for all that background. That helps a lot. So any other questions, but also are people supportive of. Snow staying this year, just the program in general, and then they can hopefully negotiate the costs?
That was a little unclear, the 27,000 sum in revenue. Does that go back to RTD or does that go to us?
It goes to RTD. They commit a certain percentage of it for marketing. If they get over their break even point where there are hard costs for to run the service or supplement what we're not funding, it will come back to us.
Expect that to happen, but I'm supportive.
We, we were wishful, I would say, the first year that that might happen, but at this point, I, I also am the same boat as you.
I should have taken the time to look this up, but what, can you talk about the schedule that bus thing runs? Like, is it weekends? Is it seven days a week? Is it?
Nope. It's for all resorts. There's six resorts involved. It's always Friday, Saturday, Saturdays, Sundays and holiday Mondays is really how they phrase it. The bus runs one, one direction up here, usually leaving Union Station at 6:00 AM and then returning from here, leaving here at 4:00, 4:30 PM. And it's just two days a week or three days, depending on the holiday.
Great. And just, and I had trouble looking at, you know, kind of being able to grasp the num, grasp the numbers. When you, if you were to divide that down, how many people are on a bus to Breckenridge from Union Station per Saturday or Sunday or holiday Monday?
It is, yeah, it is on there. Our load factor this year, which is basically the percentage of the bus being filled. Was 44% for the full year. So there's 52 seats on these buses. It's a, that's about, you know, 40. I'm sorry, 25, 24 people per bus.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Do they leave, so they leave at four o'clock? Do they sit in that traffic every Saturday?
Yes. They go through the.
Have they considered?
They're not allowed to do that yet. No. Only small capacity Pegasus vans can do the high, the high occupancy lanes. That's something that's in progress, but not there yet.
Interesting. Okay. I think everyone's supportive on continuing. To support the program.
You have a restroom and wifi?
Maybe. If they just came and, or if they stayed and ate dinner and then they could just buzz back, might be a little more enticing.
I know locals that use it just to go to Denver. I mean, they find it very convenient. Right. Use it in reverse.
Yeah.
Yep. The only other thing I had was the Breck E-Ride, the survey is open, open for until April or August 2nd. We so far had 100 responses, which is pretty good, I think, for this pretty early in the. Survey, we have 98% of people that have ridden the bike think it's a positive impact on the town, which is great. And the one thing that stands out to me right now is 72% of people that haven't used the service think it's a positive impact on the town. Which is generally positive, but there are still, you know, 27% of people that don't agree with that. So. Take the survey if you haven't and look forward to doing a debrief with Teddy when we get to that point.
The statistic that I, that stood out to me is the length of the average ride of mile and a half and the average time 15 minutes. And it's that last mile, you know, it's the last mile that we're working on. And that seems to be exactly what we're getting out of it.
I would agree. We're definitely hitting the mark with what we expected. I think the pricing model is working exactly as we had anticipated. So I agree.
Yeah, great program. I eat my words. I was concerned about it competing with our bike shops and everybody I've talked to says, that's great. It's fine.
Thank you very much, Matt.
From the mile and a half and 15 minutes, it is not, nothing to do with the bike shop.
All right, sustainability, Jesse.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have a couple additional details from the memo. Wanted to just share that the Tennis Center Solar is up and running. We are troubleshooting the monitoring. Of that, so I can't tell you how much it's producing, but that it is producing at this time. So IT is helping us. Just make the communication connection with that. Big news in the climate sector yesterday, the climate pollution reduction grants that were authorized under the IRA were issued in Colorado got $330 million for climate action. 70 million of that is earmarked for a local climate accelerator program, which means local governments can apply to the Colorado Energy Office for that funding. So it's a significant amount of money. And it will help us do a lot of the work that we're doing. Hopefully, some of the last mile delivery. And. Really, who knows what other programs it's gonna be available for. So really exciting news there.
Jesse, would that possibly help us with the geothermal experiment?
It might, yeah. It's very broad. It's, it's, it's basically, are you reducing greenhouse gas emissions and to what extent? And so the Colorado Energy Office will be developing a grant application for. That portion of the funding. So we don't know what the criteria is yet, but in general, that's what it's intended to be for. We also finally received our bike friendly community report card. I know that you wanted to see that, Councilmember Beckerman. We will include that in the next update for sustainability. And we have also started on the. E-delivery and logistics site work at the City Market or the Parkway Parcel. And Doczilla will start shipping out here in a couple of weeks. So we are excited that that project is moving forward. And then lastly, and hopefully quickly, but I know there was a lot of questions around our watering schedule and the new enforcement of that. I did include answers to the rain sensor questions in your memo, but additionally, and you guys might hear some public comment on this tonight. But the ordinance that was passed was related to a certain section of code that is really designated as outdoor watering and it's related to sprinkler heads. So what is not included in those watering schedules are drip irrigation and hand watering. So concerns around flower baskets, drip, drip irrigation. Those things are still allowed under the permanent conservation measures. So if they are watering gardens with sprinkler heads. That would be subject to the watering schedule, but if they have it on drip irrigation or they're doing hand watering, they can do that. At certain times throughout the day. And then additionally, to establish turf and to establish landscaping, it is, you are allowed to water for up to two years outside of those watering schedules as well. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that you might get tonight. Happy to answer any questions now.
Interesting.
I really appreciate the update on the rain sensors. I thought that was interesting. Love to hopefully use some of that grant money and make those available to residents if they like to, because I think it would save them money and be. Beneficial for our, the people that live here to have access to those rain sensors. I'm just curious if, you know, I briefly touched on this two weeks ago, but is there a parallel outreach we can do for heat tape? And of some kind of a. Timer of sorts and, and is there something out there and how can we promote those? Because, yeah, just thinking that. Looking at those two resources are, seem like low hanging fruit.
Great idea.
Thanks, Jess.
Anything else? Thank you very much. No, I'm okay. Thank you. Okay, open space update. We had the minutes in the packet. Don't think we have any kind of a presentation.
No, there's no presentation. Mark is here, Alex is not, but if you do have any questions, Mark can take them. Otherwise, I'm sure Jay will have a robust update this evening.
Yes, absolutely.
Never. Any questions for Mark or Jay on the meeting minutes? All right. Moving on to committee reports. There were none. So. Financials. Pam. Give us a little update.
Andrew.
Coming in from everything.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you had the report with the first five months of 2024. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you had um, the report with the first five months of twenty twenty four. Um, May is largely reflective of April sales tax collections. Um, overall year to date, we are three point eight ahead of twenty twenty four budgeted revenues and one point one in comparison with last year. Um, sales tax is currently one point seven in comparison with budget and flat in comparison with last year. Accommodations tax is ahead two hundred thousand in comparison with budget and a hundred thousand behind prior year. Real estate transfer taxes, um, coming strong. It's one point three ahead of budget and one million in comparison with last year. As for overall net taxable sales, um, year to date for May, we came in flat in comparison with last year. It's um, negative point eighty five percent. If we look at just the month of May for net taxable sales, we came ahead by um, eight point six seven percent in comparison with May of twenty twenty three. We saw increases in construction, retail and short term lodging. And um, so in retail, in town retail was ahead of last year, May by six percent and out of town thirteen percent. As I mentioned, real estate transfer tax is coming in strong in comparison with last year. Um, June was forty percent ahead of June of twenty twenty three and we were a hundred and seventeen thousand over budget for the month of June in real estate transfer tax. Um, overall year to date, all categories are seeing increases in real estate transfer tax um, and just a slight decline in time shares. And um, I'm happy to take any questions before Tracy goes over the P and L.
Thanks, Pam. Any questions on this first part? Thank you.
Yep.
Tracy.
Yeah, good afternoon. Um, looking at the income statement through June thirtieth, a couple of things I just wanted to call out. Uh, when we're recording uh, revenue as of December, of June thirtieth, you'll see that there's favorability of about two million. But it's really broken down into a couple of different things that I wanted to highlight. Uh, some of them is phasing that I would expect to flatten out. Um, we do have favorability though, and that's primarily in our investment income. Um, that is trending already one point five million favorable to budget. Um, we had the, the RET for Kroger of four hundred and ninety, which was an uptick. We do anticipate the three million that was an, uh, the accounting adjustment for the accrual for last year for the uh, FEMA and the CWCB loan. Um, still hoping for that three million uh, will be coming through. Uh, we're working with a utility department and the contractor to chase down these funds. So that will also be a boost uh, to our revenue line. It's going to be a net zero effect, but it does help revenue overall. Um, when we look at the expenditures, the, the numbers that you see here, which shows expenditures over by the four point four million. Please keep in mind that does not consider the appropriations that we're doing the second reading for. So when you see the financials in July, that will be updated in our budget and will pretty much put our expenses at a, a pretty much even um, with favorability in some of our timing, um, which will trend out and obviously reduce as the year goes on.
Great. And great work with the investments.
Yeah, Dave's doing a great job with that.
All right, any questions for Tracy? Thank you both very much.
Yeah.
Good luck with budget season. All right, and John coming down for Breck events. You do look. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, you have the memo in front of you. Uh, biggest thing is June was awesome with events and we talked briefly about Pride and Town Party and Town Cleanup. Um, Fourth of July was a, a weather jackpot for, for everybody and, and everything went well. Our biggest discussion led to the evening of the Fourth of July and some hotel constituent or hotel providers just saying, hey, how do we keep people in town overnight in Breckenridge? I know Marika's already talked to a fair amount, or a, a few of you just about the opportunities for a drone show or fireworks or things like that. Um, so I just wanted to open that discussion here briefly.
Thanks, John. Yeah, so do you want to um, talk a little bit about that or do you want to just hear?
I mean, I think John summed it up. I think it's becoming a, a big issue for lodging, just because next year, Fourth of July is on a Friday. And so how do we keep people in town? And we are also just speculating that people started to leave around two o'clock to go to other firework shows. We don't know why people left at two o'clock and we probably will not know, but that is kind of what spurred the conversation. So, um, we are going to form like a s- a special subcommittee specifically for the Fourth of July. But yes, any ideas you guys have about whether we plan some big events on Saturday and Sunday to keep people in town? Um, yeah, we're, we're open.
Yeah, so I think what they need to know from us is, are we supportive of them looking into some events that would help keep people here throughout the weekend? Yeah. Supportive questions? Obviously, we don't know many specifics. It would just be allowing them to have the space to go forward and look into that.
I'm supportive of some destination visitation programming that would really kind of drive hotel events. Like the idea of looking at like a drone, not sure about fire and fireworks. So, yeah, I prefer drone over fireworks personally.
And I know that every couple of years, the events committee looks at a drone show. So um, I also support looking at events overall and trying to figure something out, but we'll probably have to be outside the fireworks and drone. Go beyond that would be my suggestion.
I'd love to engage with the BTO because we've looked at, you know, on my time on the BTO board, we looked at light shows and they don't work in the altitude. We've looked at drones, but a fifty mile an hour wind will derail the whole thing. We lose all the investment to it. Um, obviously fireworks are not uh, appropriate at this time. Uh, so just as long as we don't spin our wheels doing the same thing we've always done and we kind of get some learning curve off of scratch and some things off the list that are not viable.
I think also to just coordinate closely, obviously BCA is on the events committee, but I feel like they're a natural partner and have probably looked into many of the same options. So hopefully they're, they've got a seat at that small group table.
I think coordinating with the other towns and communities so that we're not fighting each other over having something to do.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I almost think we should look at this on a broader scope and, and um, you know, and, and really, I think we, we need to identify which organizations are going to be in charge, BCA, BTO, you know, a- and, and um, kind of determine that. I, uh, fireworks are a hard no for me. Um, drone show, I'm wide open to look at and I know there are challenges if the weather's not cooperating. I personally would love to see fireworks come back New Year's Eve. Um, and um, just, just boring animation in general. I know we have the same number of major iconic events, but you know, we've, we've lost, lost a lot of small pieces around and we, we just can't keep dumping this on the BTO to, to come up with stuff and, you know, so kind of figure out a bigger picture on this, bring more animation for our destination guests.
Yep.
To keep them here and to keep them coming back and strengthen the brand.
I do really like the strategic look of like when you say it's landing on a Friday, so how do we keep them here Saturday, Sunday? I mean, that look just makes a kind of sense to me and if it means adding to that kind of events package or that weekend package, it makes sense. And then it's strategic and not just like more of everything.
And six, since Dick brought it up, I was, I was, I was going to let it go, but since you mentioned it, is everyone generally supportive of New Year's Eve fireworks? Or is that too big a question for right this second?
We have a presentation coming up, uh, the first.
First.
First meeting in August. So the staff, Scott and Peyton will talk to you about what our options are and what the costs will be. So that you guys can have a deeper conversation about whether or not you want to.
Alright, good timing. Alright.
And Steve, uh, I, I agree with you that we should involve the other towns um, in that committee that we join, you know, Frisco, Silverthorne, Dillon, um, to increase that animation for the weekend. Any other questions?
Looks good.
Thank you.
Much, John. Um, since we are a little ahead and the next thing is forty five minutes, I think we'll just take a five minute break.
Hey, Kelly, real quick, just backing up to sustainability, there was some stuff in there about twenty four R um, positive points for landscaping and, and around the um, box and the sensors and all of that, which generally I'm very supportive of, but it, one of the things it talked about specimen trees, how are we defining a specimen tree?
Mark.
What's that?
I think there's a definition.
Is there? Okay.
Mark will know.
Good afternoon. Uh, you'll know it when you see it. It's um, yeah, it's a judgment call, but it's usually like when we see nice size spruce like this, that's the type of thing we're looking to preserve.
So there's not a definition in the code that's specific enough?
I'll have to take a look. Honestly, I can't answer that, but that's how we treat it in the past, essentially.
If we're going to use it, I think we need a definition. That's uh,
Yeah.
So I just, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, now we'll take a break.
Participation, right?
Where's my candy?
Yeah, that's great.
Come up. How do you know? Well, you know one when you see it, but there is a.
No, I'm not sure. I'm not talking about that.
It does sort of look like giving the room the finger when you do that.
Internal sign.
We can make that a little more robust.
Anytime.
I could uh, see certain salespeople, uh, everything is going to.
She's emptying candy wrappers out of her pocket. She's not watching.
If there's positive points involved.
Any candy left in your bowl.
Eat as much as you like.
Thank you.
Positive points you're going to.
So agree.
Yes.
Add to the project.
We're gonna come back into session for the Equity Blueprint presentation and Equity Lens training. Thank you, Flor.
Good afternoon, uh mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here. Um let's go ahead and get started. Um so today we're gonna talk a little bit about um the Equity Blueprint, what is to come or what you guys should expect hopefully in the future. Um talk a little bit about definition basics. Um and then think about your identity and how you think of the world and how that relates to what we do every day. And then um take it back to the equity lens and what that is, how it came to be and um do a little bit of practice and scenarios. So how do we use it and how do we put it into practice? Before we uh go ahead and get started and get into the nitty gritty, I wanna make sure that um we talk about some agreements and some things that, you know, we think of when we think about equity and inclusion, sometimes these are difficult concepts or ideas to process and think of. Um so keeping that in mind, um I'm asking um if we could all agree to keep an open mind. Regulate your emotions. If you need a break or um need to step out, feel free to do so um as well to ask questions. Um this is a safe space, so um you know, we trust in each other and respect each other and so um knowing that we're all not one person is the expert and not one person knows less or more. Uh we're all here to learn together and uh we're all here to kind of do this as a group. So be gracious. Um and yeah. So the Equity Blueprint document, most of you guys um have been here a while and kind of know what that is. Um but it's basically a roadmap with deliverables and strategies aimed to reduce various barriers in town. Um and cultivate equity as a town, so that could be internally and outwards. How do we um basically do initiatives and work on projects and goals that um create a more equitable equitable recordage? Um you guys approved it back in twenty twenty-three, um but for those of you that weren't here then, including myself, so don't feel bad. We um I linked uh linked to it and feel free to take a look. It is a changing document, so it's a document that we prepared, knowing that it wasn't gonna be perfect and it was gonna be your first time and it is gonna continue to change, especially as recordage evolves and changes. We wanna make sure that we do so as well. And that we meet meet all the needs of our community members. So that is um hopefully gonna be revised in the fall, and so we're planning for that and just keep that in mind as we will come back in the fall and ask you questions of how do we make this better? Um what are some ideas, things we missed, concepts and um just, you know, how do we make it even more um a better fit for our town? And just to get things started, um some key terminology of um how do we um define these concepts? Sometimes these concepts are not just hard to understand, but also harder process and there's could be various different definitions. So um if you wanna take a look at what equity and equity is just basically ensuring that everyone's successful, um giving them the same, not the same opportunities, because not everybody needs the exact same thing as we will learn later on, but how do we give them the opportunities to be successful for them? Um inclusivity, making sure that everyone feels welcome, valued, um and respected. Um diversity is just the presence of various different races, ethnicity, gender, age, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, physical abilities, religious beliefs and cultural background. So again, going back to that fact that we all bring wonderful things that are different. Um and that's what brings diversity together. Um bias um is the prejudice in favor or against a one-person thing group um compared to another. And so I urge you to think of bias not as a negative thing. I know that it's often related to that, um but it's just the idea of having favored against or towards someone else and knowing that we all have them. Um so don't feel bad. Um we all have them and that's okay too. That's part of who you are and it's part of your lens and your identity. Um and um just knowing that if you're aware of it and you can think of that and acknowledge that, that's that's the key point, but not not thinking that it's bad. So first, let's start with thinking of you. So who who you are um in the sense of what comes to mind uh when we say who's Kelly, who's Carol, who's Jay? Who are you guys? And that could be anything that comes to mind. I know that when we did trainings in the about this in the past, that's a really big question, but just what comes to mind? Um I'm gonna give you a moment to think of the following questions, um in that as part of who you are also comes your experiences. Um you who has shaped you, what has shaped you? That could be college, that could be education. Um in another way, that could be um your jobs, experiences, that could be your family, your values. You know, what experiences have shaped who you are today? Um education level, um what languages do you speak? Um what do you do for fun? How would you describe your economic well-being and what do you get? How do you get around town? How do you get around the state? Um the country, the world. Are you even allowed to leave the country? Are you even allowed to travel the world? Like, think about all those things? And then what do you surround yourself with? And that could be people, that could be objects, that could be your environment. Where are you happy you and and who are those people in that place uh where you feel the most um the most you? So I'll give you a couple of uh minutes to think about that. Um feel free to write them down or think of them. Um but yeah, I'll give you a little bit to think about that. And I guess Jay already had this training, so he he gets to be a little ahead of everyone else. And for languages, I just wanted to say that that could include pig Latin. So if you speak that, put that down as well. Some people saw writing, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started again. Um if someone wants to share, um that could be any of them. Um I know who you are is kind of a big thing, but does anybody wanna share what comes to mind when we ask, when I ask you who you are?
Since uh it was put on there, I I would love to start. You know, when I think the first time that I saw this, I was kind of paralyzed with like, geez, this is kind of this is, it's it's what you said, it's pretty deep, but you know, uh after marinating on it and thinking about it since then. You know, I really came to the i- it's it's being a father, it's being an employer, a public servant. Um and then, you know, outdoor enthusiast, a traveler, and then, you know, really seeing that the the things that are paramount to me are relationships with friends and family and that's kind of what I took that as my identity.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Anybody else?
Oh, well. I see myself as an advocate for the work workforce. Um I feel um I was influenced, you know, how I came here through my education. I feel I'm feel very privileged um economically as a US citizen. As a as a member of a small community. Um along with that, I feel a huge responsibility a- as a leader, you know, towards my community. Um my work, my family. Um I love to surround myself with my family and and those that my family love. Um along with um a wide variety of people. I love being in environments where um it feels like everyone's welcome.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. How about any other fun facts? Like um languages? Does people, does someone else speak another language?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that one. Been in Japan for a couple of years, so I speak enough Japanese to be dangerous, um some French. Uh a little bit of Spanish to get around and yeah, so a couple of languages.
Awesome.
Yeah, it is. I mean, all these questions, especially the first one, who are you almost? That's a big question to define and what to point out and all them go back for the languages you speak that speaks to the places you've lived, the experiences you've had. Everything. So you can dig deeper and deeper on all these questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Um perfect. Then let's think about that and what we heard from each other. That moves us on to I think we're missing a site. That's okay. So that takes us on to that is your lens. So who you are, your experiences, everything that has shaped you is your lens. It's how you see the world, right? Um I'm sure Todd, who went to Japan, is able to see a different perspective of what cultural experiences he had over there. There he wasn't the majority, right? He was the minority. He had to experience something a little bit differently. Um same with what Dick said, you know, he grew up a certain way that helped him see the world and helped him create those core values and beliefs. So every time he sees something, he thinks of what's my responsibility and how, what am I responsible for? How can I speak for those that I represent? Um Jay, he loves the outdoors, right? He was saying um he loves being a dad. So I'm sure that when he thinks of the world, he's that comes to mind, right? His kids, his family. Um being outside, that those moments and that feeling that he gets when he's outside mountain biking or doing whatever he he's doing, I'm assuming mountain biking, but um. So all of that creates our lens and every time we're placed with an experience or a situation, a decision, we come back to that core of who we are, these experiences, these things that have shaped us and that makes us who we are. And so often is a great thing, right? We are, we are, we get to see things, we get to put our lens and see that. Oh, maybe I'm advocating for these type of people or because I know what it's like to be a minority in a different country, I can relate to those who are like that in this country. But sometimes we we get stuck in that because it's who we are and there's nothing wrong with that. But so this training will kind of help us think of questions that we don't think of every day. Because we are stuck in our identity and in our lens every day, which is great and it's valuable. It's what we wanna bring every day because that's what makes this team and this town beautiful. But at the same time is how do we step out of our lens? And think of things in a different way and ask the questions that we might have missed. Because we didn't grow up in another country or we didn't get to go or we're not allowed to maybe leave the country, whatever the situation is that we don't maybe get to experience. How do we think of that and ask ourselves those questions so that we do and we don't forget maybe the things and the experiences we didn't get to do or have? So the, I think all of you have a copy of this um in your packet, but if not, um I'm happy. I have copies. I know that we kind of don't like paper, but if you wanna paper, I'll be. We have some here. And basically, um we created this equity lens with the purpose um to make people think of making more equitable decisions that we sold or decisions that we sold more equitable and inclusive outcomes. So to really process through things um and ask those questions. Of who are we missing? Um who has been missing? Who's not here? Who is here? Who will be here? Who will be impacted, right? Who are those people um that we need to think about groups, minorities, or people who have been not represented? Intention, what is our intention? And have we intentionally involved the members that will be affected? Have we maximized a sense of inclusivity? Um what are efforts? Are they enough? Are they really inclusive? The impact, what are the disparities in the consequences that we're gonna have with this? And that could be good or bad. But are we really thinking through that? Are we really thinking about who it's going to affect? Uplift, are we uplifting experiences, knowledge, contribution of the people who either will be affected, the people who are here, who the people who are involved? Um and benefit, uh we ultimately, I think we're here to serve the people of Breckridge, so we want them to all be benefited. At some point, unfortunately, there are many decisions where not everyone's gonna benefit from it, right? And the idea there is to think of, okay, if we miss someone or we're not able to benefit at all, how can we think of that in the future? Have we processed through that? Have we really, are we okay with not benefiting everyone? Because sometimes we just can't. And and have we processed through it? Have we accepted it? Have we acknowledged? And trust, uh which is a big one, is how is everything that we're doing creating trust within our community? I think that's one thing as a town that we're working on is making sure that we create trust. We have trust with some awesome groups, but how do we start getting into trust with those groups that we haven't been able to in the past and have we thought about them and are is this gonna create more trust or is this gonna uh remove or create a bigger gap, the the lack of trust that we have currently? So just some things to think about. So I just wanted to give you a simple example. I'm gonna give all of you this shirt. It's gonna be a size small in that exact same color, that shape. How would you feel wearing this shirt? Does it fit? As least a size small? Does it, does it fit everyone? And would you feel confident in this shirt? Does it bring out your eyes? Feel free to share. What are some comments? How would you feel?
Color's alright, matches the hair a little bit, so we're good there. Don't like the V-neck, a little tight, and so no, not confident at all.
Anything else?
I'd say I'm lucky. I think it would fit me perfectly. I'd like to see some of the others. It would be a belly shirt for them, so.
Yeah, right. So the with this example, I didn't really do a good job of thinking who, right? I just gave you all a shirt. I didn't think of who you were. I didn't think that Jay is tall. I didn't think about Todd in that he maybe doesn't fit very well in a small. I didn't even ask him. I, my intention, I didn't even think through my intention. I just gave you a shirt and said you're wearing it, right? Didn't even process that. I didn't think of the impact. I didn't think of, you know, is his hair gonna match the color? I didn't think of that. Um uplifting, I didn't think of your confidence. How would you feel walking in here? And am I really gonna uplift you or am I just gonna put you to shame? Um benefit, I didn't think of that either. Would it benefit you? I didn't even process that. And it probably wouldn't create trust, right? If I'm making you wear a shirt you don't even like or you didn't even pick, right? So equality is everyone getting that same shirt? Or if, yeah, it were qualities, everyone getting that same shirt. I'm just giving you a shirt and I don't care. I didn't go through these things. I I don't think about who you are, your impact, if it'll be good for you, I just gave it to you. Equity though is making sure that you get that shirt that fits you, that will make you be successful, that will help you feel comfortable. And taking it on to inclusivity and belonging, I'm gonna give you a shirt that not only will fit you and you feel good, but you will actually are gonna come here and feel confident, so that I bring out the best of you. Kind of taking it farther. So that's a quick example. And now um I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through the, or yeah, I'm gonna read for the people in Zoom, but and the people in the audience, but we're gonna think of this scenario. And I want you to process through the equity lens and I'm gonna divide you into two groups and I know maybe Zoom won't be able to hear, but we'll divide you between two groups and just quickly go through all those questions. Who who are we impacting? What's the intention? Who isn't impacting? Are we uplifting? Who's benefiting and is it creating trust? When we're doing this. So town X, Y, and Z is developing a new trail and as part of its development plan, they would like to engage the community for feedback. The town wants to ensure the trail is inclusive and well-used by all community members. To gather input, the town has decided to conduct focus groups. Focus groups are set for Tuesdays at eleven AM at the proposed trailhead, which is only accessible via mountain bike. The town believes the location will inspire the group as if. The town believes the location will inspire the group as they discuss. Drinks and snacks will be provided. So now if you could get into groups, then we're gonna ask ourselves those same questions, right? And go through the equity lens. And so you have on the column, on the Y column, the who, the intention, the impact. But then you have these questions. So if we were to do this scenario. And through this, what have we missed? And um, what did we not think about? Now pass this Zoom. As we went through that, let's answer some of these questions that. That maybe the lens helped us see through. Um, so who is, who is and who's not at the decision-making table?
Most people are not.
Uh, yeah.
One who works on Tuesdays or doesn't have a mountain bike or. Can't read in English or whatever the language that this was posted in, because there's no language.
Doesn't have the physical or mental capabilities to get there.
Yeah. And who is? Who is at the meeting?
People who already have nice, fit mountain.
What was that, Carol?
Just fit mountain bikers that can make it.
Yeah. Uh, what assumptions are taking place?
So many from the time of the meeting, the people that can get there, the snacks that they lead.
Mm-hmm.
The language they need.
Language.
We're also assuming we're being inclusive.
Mm-hmm. Good job. Yes.
The people who care.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and who is being harmed? I think we kind of clarified who got benefit, but who's being harmed by the decision and process?
Great part of the public.
A great part of the public.
The people that we wanna build trust with.
Yes, the people we wanna trust with, reach out.
I would even argue that the mountain bikers that are there are harmed because they don't have like the diversity and the broad spectrum of ideas. So I think everybody suffers a little bit because you're not getting the three hundred and sixty degree view.
Yes, great job, Todd. I would have to agree, yes. New idea? Okay, and what would we do differently if we went through the lens and we kind of went through it? What would we have thought about?
Multiple meetings.
Multiple meetings?
Location.
Location.
Translation.
Translation or multiple languages, yeah.
Purpose of the trail.
Yeah. Let me think a little bit more through why, why and what are we trying to achieve? More of that intention, what's our intention? Why are we trying to, to do?
Open transportation, meetings that you could access via public transportation or walking or maybe even moving the meeting to a place that might get. Different perspectives.
Access to our meeting. We also didn't think about childcare, right? For people who were working or who needed childcare. We didn't think about food, right? Is someone gonna be gluten-free, vegan? Uh, we didn't ask that. Um, so yeah, we definitely missed a lot of the questions that if we would have gone through that equity lens and asked ourselves. Maybe we would have come up with a different outcome or a different way to get people involved, right? So um. This equity lens is available to everyone. Um, it's on our Breckridge Social Equity Advisory Commission website. Uh, we are working on a potential site for, just for tools and resources related to equity. But for now, this is where it lives. And that is also where our equity blueprint lives, if you ever looking for that as well. Um, so feel free to go on there and use it whenever things come up. And it's, it can be used for any process, decision, uh, procedure. Or really any time that you're gonna implement something or do something. You really wanna think about, is this gonna be equitable? Is, am I including everyone that needs to be included? Um, feel free to take a look, go through it, um, and feel free to ask questions. Um, you know, the Social Equity Advisory Commission is a great resource as well. If you ever wanna come, let me know. Um, we, you wanna discuss anything, Carol is also a great resource and myself, if you ever wanna um, go through anything or talk it out. Um, but yeah, any questions or anything else you wanna share?
Flor, I was wondering if you um. When you're sitting in here and you're listening to our discussion or our projects, if you can help us sort of. Um, particularly this trust piece. I feel like one of the reasons that maybe we haven't built trust with either a group of people or, you know, different people. Is that we just don't know that we're damaging that trust or that we haven't reached out to them specifically. And so I feel like that for me is a piece that I'm really interested in getting feedback, I mean, from anyone. But um, particularly just with your training and knowledge, I feel like that would be a great thing for you to continually keep at the front of your mind to help us with.
Yes, yeah, I will. Um, I think I, we're doing a great job and the fact that we're aware of it is a huge step. And I think the next step is starting to build that um, commonality is where trust comes, right, starts with is. You know, we're like Spanish-speaking, our Spanish-speaking community members that we're doing everything in Spanish. Or a lot of the things that we're posting and putting out there in Spanish, that's huge. I mean, just even myself, when we posted the Fourth of July, the happy Fourth of July. I like, I, you know, I might cry a little bit because what that means to someone who speaks Spanish. Knowing that the town cares enough to, to put it out in a language that you understand. And that you are part of that community, that just means a lot. So yes, starting, I think that's a huge starting place. So how do we start creating um, commonality of like, we care, we're here. We might have not been able to reach you quite yet, but that's the next step. We know that you are here. We know that, you know, we wanna engage. And then the more that they see that we really are, you know, consistency and we are trying to do things, I think that's a great step. And absolutely, I'm happy to continue to do that work. So thank you.
Well said, and the work that you've done already with the town that our commissioners here today have done. It's, um, and thank you to the commissioners that are here. Um, it is very much that learning process where we talked from the beginning how important trust is, but it has to be genuine. And it is gonna be in some ways a slow process. We don't just earn someone's trust. It has to be this continuous system. And I know Flor, housing staff, Shannon, Scott, like the commission, there's so many examples where we've had that feedback and we've improved. And um, there's gonna be that continuous incremental improvement. As she mentioned, Flor mentioned from the beginning, that blueprint is a living document that we're gonna continue to work on. The equity lens before us, it's changed a few times, each time with more and more input and thoughtfulness.
Are there other questions?
For?
Very well, thank you guys.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did a fantastic job of really making it simple and walking us through it. And thank you to the commissioners who came. That's awesome for you to support Flor and also to be here to be part of the discussion with us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, switching gears a little bit to planning matters, we've got the Copper Bearin condo, Unit Two Development Agreement Work Session. Ellie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is a work session for um, a proposed development agreement submitted by Craig Campbell. The owner of Copper Bearin Unit Two located at two seventeen Southridge Street Alley. Um, and it's proposing converting the unit from commercial use to employee housing. Um, it was originally constructed, um, when the building was originally constructed, it was subject to the Adams Ridge Master Plan. Which allowed a one-to-one Floria ratio regardless of use and that has since expired. Um, so this development agreement follows um, the process of a previous development agreement approved in twenty twenty-two. For the Big Sky Building, which is another building in Adams Ridge, um, that followed the same process. And um, in that, um, town council agreed to waive all permit fees and the density transfer fee in exchange for gaining an employee housing unit. Um, so staff is supportive of the proposal, um, and is able to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ellie. Are there questions that we should? Start with this, start this discussion with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If um, in this, I saw that there is no appreciation cap, but will there be rental caps that will be associated with this?
Um, I do not believe there are rental caps with our typical deed restriction at the moment. Um, I'd have to double-check with the housing department, but I don't believe so.
Great, thank you.
Is this a commercial condo?
Currently, yes. It's an office space.
And it's a, is that a mixed-use building currently?
Um, yes. So there's two commercial spaces in it currently and then a residential space um, on the upper floor.
I, yeah, you're not ready for comments after this question.
Laurie, did you wanna um, add something? Can you come up, Laurie, just to the mic?
Yeah, our, our preference from housing is that um, whenever we're doing a development agreement. That the deed restriction does establish a rental cap. Um, I, I'm sure this deed restriction will refer to our guidelines. Um, and our guidelines have some language in there about the town will set appropriate rental rates. Um, based on the market conditions and things like that, but it's always clearer if the deed restriction has it in there. Um, and our standard is just start with a hundred percent AMI rental cap.
Okay, that helps. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? You can stay, Laurie, yeah.
Could you, um, or Ellie, could you remind us with the somewhat similar development agreement on Ridge Street? Did we have an AMI cap, a rental cap, some of those details?
Um, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I do know with the other one that we did, we did our typical um, deed restriction that we do. Um, so it's possible, but I'd have to look into that. Okay.
I don't remember the Hogan neither. I would think there was some conversation at the time that the council was looking at the um, Hogan um, development agreement. About even a request that the town buy down the rental cap and, and the town contribute financially to the conversion. And there was talk about that and I don't, I think we moved away from that and it was a fairly standard deed restriction. I think subsequent to that, we've adopted our guidelines, which talk about rental caps or rental units. Um, so there might have been a change in our guidelines since we did the Hogan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dick, do you wanna start?
Sure, right. You know, I see this kind of um, development agreement being one that, that hopefully we'll see more of. I think office spaces, it's not as valuable as it once was and certainly. Um, these units in the core of town are, are uh, prime workforce housing units. So I think that's great. That being said, I, I think, you know, with, with the town's contribution of close to a quarter of a million dollars. Um, I think we should do our, our normal. I don't think we should do a deed restriction light, which is what I'm reading here. I think we should do our normal deed restriction, which would have a appreciation cap. Um, and um. You know, the rental, eh, we could put that in. I, I just, you know, we, if we did this development agreement, the, the um. Owner could turn around and sell it and with a deed restriction light, make, might make quite a profit probably. So um, you know, we wanna keep it affordable, you know, for our workforce. So I would say, you know, I, I know our rental caps have evolved, so have our deed restrictions and uh, you know. And I think this is in line with how they've evolved and into our, our normal updated deed restriction. Rental cap, I'm kind of. Either way, you know, the market does that somewhat, but um. Um, but you're right, Laurie. I mean, it's, it's always, always nice to have it defined in there. So I, I'd be okay with a hundred percent AMI on the rental.
Other comments on?
Yeah, I agree. I like the idea of encouraging more residential in the core of town. I think that's fantastic. Um, that'd be neat to try and figure out doing a few more of these. Um, I support a rental cap. The market will take care of the price, but I'd also like to make sure that price doesn't start off too high. So I'm gonna be dick on rental cap and the price appreciation.
And this one's a good one because it has parking too.
Yeah, that's great.
Steve?
I agree with everything that Dick and Todd have said. I think we should follow and really be consistent with a model. That we're gonna deed restrict these with not the deed restriction light, but with our regular deed restriction. Just as if we were buying a condo somewhere and turning it into housing, but we should encourage this happening. And as Dick points out, the office space just isn't nearly as valuable as it may have once been in the world. But the housing is valuable and I think it's a great idea. Um, and the intention is probably good to do this. So um, we may seem to be coming off a little hard on the application, but I think it's necessary. That we don't set a precedent of just turning these spaces into something and then letting them go into the market wide open.
Well, yeah, I think um, Steve said it well, as well as the others. And I'm absolutely supportive of moving this direction. It's cheaper than building. But it does start to set this precedent and I don't think the market will equalize it at a fair rate. So putting our full deed restriction and um, trying to work with the applicant on some sort of just clear rental. Thanks.
Sorry.
Um, I, I'm coming about it from a different perspective and I'll be in the minority on this. But I think to encourage transformations like this and then to put a deed restriction heavy on it. Are counterintuitive, but they don't work to. and then to put a deed restriction heavy on it are counterintuitive, but they don't work together. I think, uh, having the appreciation cap on there is in itself, um, detrimental to encouraging more of these. Uh, when you look at the valuation of properties, it's based on the rent rolls. And so if there is a rental cap, which I think we all support, some sort of, you know, not having a landlord overcharge for rent, that that then sets the market price for the deed restriction light. Uh, if the rental, if you can only charge a hundred percent AMI, that in itself, from a valuation standpoint, kind of will curb the valuation of going too high. I think when we, um, throw a regular, um, deed restriction heavy on it, and we have a one, two, or three percent appreciation cap, then it is discouraging for other people that own office space to try to do this. Uh, it would be my strong recommendation to, uh, do, continue with the deed restriction light, which has yet to be proven to, uh, be unaffordable, uh, to people like we haven't seen the appreciation be, be unattainable for, for the deed restriction light, and then have the rental cap be the, the further check and balance. Um, I think the, the argument behind the, um, uh, of, of transforming this is that it could be a front-range, uh, crash pad, but with the deed restriction light having to work, uh, in the Upper Blue for thirty hours or more, it really does appreciate, it, 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 it counteracts that, and, uh, that would be my opinion.
Marika?
No, it's okay. I'm leaning toward deed restriction heavy and also the rent cap at a hundred percent AMI. I do agree with Jay though, that some type of incentive to get people to do this more than just the nine thousand dollars waived in planning fees could be helpful. I just don't know what that is.
It may be, you know, we'll have to, if we're going to do the updated deed restriction, I'm sorry, I didn't let you go, but I mean, if we did, we're going to have to come up with a baseline price from which the appreciation would build. Maybe we use that tool with the applicant to, uh, as a bit of an incentive piece. So that we're certain the applicant can get a fair market value for the existing office space along with the additional monies that they're spending in, in the conversion. So maybe that could be the, the tool.
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
Well, with the, with our full deed restriction, it, it is, uh, you know, we'll have to have a baseline price. Because these aren't necessarily being sold or being converted, same owner. So we'll have to have a baseline price from which the appreciation will grow, which is typically three percent a year. So maybe when establishing that baseline price, we can, you know, work with the applicant to, to build in some level of an incentive to do these kind of things around the market price of the current office space along with the, allowing the regroup of, of any kind of, um, you know, the conversion cost to take it from commercial to residential.
Yeah.
That one, that piece of it needs to get a little more thought, but I think that piece can also be used as the incentive piece.
There's value being added. We just need to take a look at what the value is as office space and potentially what the gap is when we get to residential use with a heavy deed restriction.
Yeah, I, um, don't actually agree with the appreciation cap for the same reasons that Jay's already stated. I think it's a huge disincentive to doing deed restrictions. But if there's some way to do a better job of, um, considering that price upfront, I would be supportive of hearing what that is, and I don't know how much it matters because I'm in the minority as well. Um, I do think the rental cap is really important, and I think that that will actually, um, do, do quite a bit to curb the retail sale anyway, regardless of what the, and I would love, um, Jay said we haven't seen a lot of data on the deed restriction light resale, and Dick says, oh, yes, we have. So if we could have a presentation of that information so that we're all starting with that same information, including the public to help ev, all of us understand, you know, the impact of
Schedule that.
The appreciation cap or just rental cap.
Second meeting in August, we are, um, intending to present that analysis of the value of the deed restriction light. Yeah, it's, will be very interesting for you all to see the data.
Okay, so for, yeah?
As I say, I'm open to kind of a, making sure the incentives are there to, that this goes and it turns into housing, right? And it's a thoughtful centerpiece, so flexible, I think, as far as, yeah, just making sure it's thoughtful and works.
Okay, so it sounds like, um, that the appreciation cap carried the day, but, um, we're hoping that it's based off of a, favorable, I don't know, number? Um, and then everybody would like the rental cap included. And I just, I did want to say, you know, it's not just the nine thousand, it's also the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of density, so it is pretty significant. But I just wanted to mention that so that people who aren't sitting with the numbers in front of them. Is there anything else that we needed to talk about for? That looked like the questions.
Yep, I think that covers it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Craig, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going back to, um, are we following the agenda as we're separating it out into the block eleven McCain parking discussion?
Yeah, we, well, we thought if it's okay that we would address the parking first, and then we would go into the other housing questions for the council, and
That sounds great.
I think this is great that it's following, um, you know, the equity lens training that you just did. And I would ask that as, I mean, there's some really important decisions and feedback that we're going to be getting from you relative to this exciting project that we have coming up. And, and this is a great opportunity for you to think about those things through that lens as you're doing, eh, as you're going through this.
Totally agree.
But just to set the stage a little bit on the parking and, uh, and the memorandum I laid out there that really the issue that we want to discuss here back in two thousand and three, the town entered into a parking agreement with ski resort, which, uh, requires us to provide five hundred spaces of additional skier parking, the winter recreational user parking, uh, and it specifically calls out the area of block eleven, south end of block eleven, and that's obviously historically, uh, where we have provided that parking. And over the years, certainly a lot more than five hundred spaces on key days. But even back then, it was anticipated that someday that would be developed. And so there was some clauses in those agreements that allowed for the town to work with the ski area should the need arise to move it, uh, to a different location. And as long as that location was acceptable, uh, from an operating standpoint to both the town and the ski resort, it could be moved. And it, it has specifically called out that they, uh, certainly, for operational logistical reasons, they wanted to prefer it to be at one location versus breaking it up into five, one hundred spaces, uh, spots around town. So as you know, uh, that we are in the process of this last really big development that we want to do, which we're referring to as a runway. And as such, uh, you know, we're, in planning this site, we're trying to work around the skier parking, and staff has developed a proposal to move the skier parking out, uh, onto the very southeast corner of the McCain property and in your packet. And, uh, as part of a site visit today, we laid out, um, and, and by the way, Elena Scott with Norris Design, who was working to help design this parking, uh, got tied up in traffic and wasn't able to get here, but was able to get, was coming from Eagle County, but stopped in Frisco and is joining us on Zoom. So if there's any questions relative to the layout, if I can't answer them, we can, we'll, we'll check with Elena. But, uh, in the packet, you have a conceptual drawing of what it could look like to have, uh, five hundred cars parked out on McCain, and it would all be located on the east side of the new roadway that is currently being constructed out there. Uh, and, you know, not, not impacting any of the open space area to the west of that roadway. It would involve the removal of quite a bit of that dredge rock that has been out there for years. Uh, the majority of that dredge rock would be, have to be removed in order for us to do this. So, uh, this is an opportunity to hear from you, and we've been talking about this. I think you've seen some things. We had the site visit today. We're here to address any questions that you have relative to the parking agreement in general, or either, either of the proposals, right now, there are basically two proposals, right? Where this could be located in this current location, uh, which we feel, you know, will have a direct impact on the new housing and/or, uh, the proposed location out on McCain.
All right. There's a lot of, I'm not, I was going to say something to start it off, but there's too many places to even think about starting it off. Do people have, like, just questions? Okay, Todd?
Yeah, we've got just kind of a foundational question to understand what we're working with. So on the existing skier parking, it's my understanding that there are easements there or utilities, I think, high-powered gas lines. Or is there the ability to put structures where there isn't the easement on those?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So as we're looking at that parking, if we decide to move the parking, there's an opportunity, I think.
So it would be, Todd, pretty much you have the area that we would call the southeast corner of block eleven.
Uh huh.
Or, so if you think about that old school site, which was eight acres that we traded for.
Yep.
The, the very southeast piece of that, closer to the river, that's developable.
Yep.
Or the, uh, directly opposite would be the northwest.
Yeah.
Piece of that.
Got it.
Southeast next to Upper Blue there.
Oh, you're next to Upper Blue and the river. But because it, you know, think about it, runs diagonal from that line across there, so you, you have the easement, and then you have both sides of them.
How much?
How much would be developable?
I mean, how many units would you get in that?
Oh, I, I mean, if you were putting housing in there, you'd get another handful of houses in there. Yeah.
What's, what's a handful?
I mean, I, we're probably talking.
It depends on the product.
Out of that eight acres, there's probably half of that's developable.
Say four acres is, um, not encumbered by an easement.
Yeah.
Um, you know, depending on what housing type, if it was multifamily, if it's same family, the number of units would, would vary. But yeah, it's definitely, there are open areas that are not encumbered by an easement that could have development on them.
And you could have roadways or travel lanes across that easement, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can pave it and have open space, park, um, snow storage for the project itself. Parking of some vehicles for residents of the neighborhood and all sorts of things. You could think about planning for that parcel.
Great, thank you.
Good question. Um, the original master plan or the most current master plan prior to this looksie? Pull that up? Cause that showed where we're doing parking as open space, eleven point five two acres, right? Am I seeing that correctly?
Yeah.
Um, and then it also shows, I believe, thirty-nine acres up on the western side.
Up at the top there.
Is that owned by the town of Brock up on the west? Or is that, okay, so on both sides of the river?
Is that every, is that the whole thing or everything?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
There's a wildlife corridor on that side.
Okay, and those, both of those parcels are just master-planned open space. They're not part of our open space. That's not owned by the open space group, correct?
That's inaccurate. The portion, the, if you recall, I think it was maybe two years ago, that the open space program purchased up to fifteen acres.
Fifteen, the track eight, correct.
That was on the west side of the McCain Road. The strip that's located on the east side, it says open space, eleven point five two acres. That was not part of that purchase.
Correct.
It was identified as open space simply because there was
It's just master planned as open.
Exactly, so that's so.
How about the north, I mean, the west side, the thirty-nine acres up on the other side of the river on both sides?
Yes, so when the town originally acquired the McCain property as a whole, thirty percent of the property was purchased, was paid for through open space. And then the additional expense of two years ago was the, was fifteen acres-ish.
So that thirty-nine acres to the west, along with tract eight, which is the fifteen and a half acres,
Yep.
are both part of open space, very difficult to change that, correct?
It's on the open space rolls.
Yes.
Yes.
Whereas that stuff on the east, that little strip that's also named open space is just master planned open space, which is kind of a working
That's correct.
Is how that's looked at. So that actually is a lot, and that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
Cause I've gotten a few questions, so I, I'm just saying this all to make sure I have it accurate, just so people understand the difference. So they both say open space, but they're handled very differently, all three tracks.
Correct. The, on the west, anything labeled open space on west of the McCain Road, if you will, was paid for by the open space program. Anything on the east side of the road was simply labeled as such in the master planning process.
Okay. So the roads going in, um, the existing rec path in its current location could be widened and probably the most cost-effective way with that rec path, instead of moving it, would be just to widen it in its current alignment and, and then cross, you know, we know we have a really dangerous intersection to the north, you know, near our, our workforce housing units, and so we're trying to get it over to the other side. So we have options. I don't want to get too detailed in all this because we're going to, going to confuse the questions, but, you know, from a cost-effective standpoint, we could, you know, leave that, that the way it is. We could put, you know, the roads obviously going in, and that would probably be least impactful on existing open space out there.
Well, can I just say that Shannon Smith, since she's not here, I'm going to put words in her mouth. She has said many times that we need to relocate the rec path out of the Fairview Roundabout.
We do. That's the dangerous intersection I'm also referring to, but there are other options of places to, to have it cross the new road and go to the new alignment that Shannon wants to.
I see what you're saying. So you're saying if we left it on the
Yeah.
east side and then cross McCain.
Yeah, cross it, see where it goes up to the, I said, the school parcel?
See what you're saying.
I think Dick.
We could do it.
I mean, the downside is you're crossing the road again.
Yeah, right, I understand.
We got to cross it anyway, somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I just wanted to ask those questions or really bring them up for, for clarity.
That was a great clarifying question. Others?
Can we talk about, um, the traffic impacts? Both to, we kept it on block eleven, how, um, traffic would come into that lot. I think that's good to retalk about, even though we talked about it during the site visit, and then also talking about the potential to move parking to McCain and how that would potentially impact the Fairview Roundabout, the FERC building, the housing that we have on that side of the property.
Yeah, so let's, let's start with block eleven, and, you know, I specifically talked to Shannon Smith twice about this, so make sure that I communicated this correctly and that we were in agreement. So you all recall that within the last couple of years that we've identified that we need major improvements along Airport Road. With, you know, with development going on out there and, and vehicular traffic, it's just not operated at the level that it needs to operate on, and it's, and it, and it needs to be re-engineered. Well, you know, knowing that we, uh, knowing that we were going to have this development and that if we were going to be parking up to five hundred additional vehicles. and that if we were gonna be parking up to five hundred additional vehicles in that area, Shannon was gonna be doing some widening along Airport Road as part of that development and allowing for some, uh, different left turn lanes, knowing that those are peak periods and they tend to stack on left turns going in there. As, you know, they don't scatter throughout the day. They come in at the same time. They tend to leave at a similar time. But arrival is generally at, at, at a very similar time. Uh, she feels strongly that if we don't, uh, put the parking out there, that we, we'll still have to make improvements, but they won't be to the same extent. And we probably would be able to eliminate some of those left turn lanes that she was gonna design in there. So I think there'll be a little less, the, uh, road infrastructure improvements that would have to be made if we weren't planning for those additional, uh, vehicles out there, uh, which will save a little money. But you know, as I stated in the memo, there will also be some additional expense if you, uh, put it out on McCain. Because we, while we haven't designed that yet, we do anticipate there could be some smaller retaining walls that have to be built right where we grade up to, uh, down below highway nine there. So as far as traffic, uh, you know, our goal is to not impact, uh, any additional traffic going up through into the Fairview Roundabout or exiting towards, uh, you know, we, as you can see on that parking and you look at that drawing, we're designing that. We wanna design that so no right turns can be made in exiting that lot. We only want vehicles to exit to the left and to go out onto Coin Valley. We don't want, does that mean a couple of them will sneak out to the right? Sure. But if it becomes a big problem, it also is an enforcement tool we can have because, you know, we're gonna have no right turns. You know, being allowed to go out there. And we would probably try to design that driveway access in a way that also prohibits, makes it harder for you to go to the right, because we do wanna avoid putting, uh, multiple cars out that way and into that roundabout from that direction. Other than that, it's the, the same number of cars, you know, whether, whether they come out of, uh, block eleven or McCain or, uh, coming out on the highway and then heading towards Frisco. So we don't see any ambition. There could be a, if they tend to, uh, I'm not worried about them entering and stacking, cause I think we have enough distance there that they could queue and get in easy. If they, if, if they exited at the same time, uh, they could queue up a little bit on coin, right? Because there's not a huge difference, distance between that driveway and the road. But it just means that if cars are stacked up and they get stacked up now waiting for that light to turn, that it just means people won't exit on the coin until that frees up. So we're, we're not really concerned.
I would add one more thing, Rick. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, there, there's two chicanes designed into the McCain Road right of way, as you can see. Um, just north there of where it says twelve A, there's a chicane in the road design and then another chicane. And that's an intentional traffic calming element that will deter people from cutting through that direction, as well as all the other things that Rick already mentioned.
About the, um, the parking staying on block eleven, um, that's a bit of a concern in terms of conflicts and, and traffic patterns is, you know, in the past, the, the parking has been throughout all of the block eleven property with the access to it through the fraction road. Um, um, you know, we are now pushing the parking down to the south end of block eleven and the access is through, um, the Breck Terrace easement. The school district uses that easement as well, um, and comes in off of Airport Road through Breck Terrace and then back down to the elementary school. Um, so there could be some conflicts with the school buses, um, about the same time the skiers are arriving. Um, it's just one of the potential conflicts, um, once the skier parking is all.
Yeah, our other concern is how much, are we gonna lose any of that Breck Terrace parking? That really tightens up in the winter.
They won't be able to have the head in. It'll have to be redesigned.
Parking, they stick out, they stick out, you know, it just narrows that.
We would have to relocate that part.
Yeah, yeah. It's a fifty-foot wide access easement and clearly the head-in parking on both the north-facing and the south-facing are within that fifty-foot access easement that is supposed to be open to enable access.
Can you clarify, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this right. Are you pushing cars out of this to the right towards Coin Valley or to the left towards Valley Brook? Like what was, was a little mixed. It was turned around there earlier.
I'm, I'm talking about if they exit out of McCain, it would be, if the, the proposed parking on McCain.
Yeah.
Once they came out of that, then it's, they could only go left towards Coin Valley.
Maybe I'm just turning around.
Right here. See, this is it. Okay.
Oh, out of the new one, out of the new one. I'm with you now.
Yeah.
Yep.
The new one.
Thanks.
On the other one, they're gonna go out and once they hit Airport, they can go left or right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Rick, can you talk about numbers? We've had discussions up here that, um, the agreement is for five hundred spots, but they overpark that. So both what have discussions with the ski area been with that? And also there's some, um, at the site visit mentioned that be it if the parking's here or McCain, that we'd work with the ski area to make sure that this is truly overflow. But then what does that mean for the free parking? Would there be free parking anymore?
Uh, the way, uh, pre-skier parking?
Mm-hmm.
I think it, you know, Shannon and I had a meeting with John Hope and the ski area's intention is that they still wanna offer free parking. Um, and so, yes, I mean, I think the fact that they wanna continue to do that and, and provide the shuttle service. We are seeing, we have seen a real change in the, in the use of that parking, which is good. And some of that may be because we have the parking structure in place. Uh, but they're also, you know, they're also tracking it and, and looking at some trends. So they have to see that could easily, you know, why it might, that, that usage may have been trending down over the last couple of years. Uh, it could easily trend back up again. And so they need to have some flexibility in there. But what we do know is that if we look at the twenty-three, twenty-four season and, and then look at the vehicles that were parked out there, they only went over four hundred cars being parked in that lot, uh, twelve occasions.
Over four hundred?
Huh? Over four hundred, not the five hundred, just the four hundred. There, there was, you know, they hit four hundred, there was four fifty, maybe, maybe the four ninety-five. So, um, it just, you know, it was, it was, uh, ten or twelve. And I think, actually, I think it was twelve and it was only ten times when they were over five hundred. And the ski area is working and had conversations and we, and, and Scott and I met with CMC to look at opportunities. Because the reality is, we still have to account for those twelve days, right? What are we gonna do as a community to address that? And CMC is very willing to work with the ski area, but they can only provide up to two hundred and thirty spaces. On those limited days, but again, we're talking maybe ten days out of the year. And then there's a couple of days and probably most notably, um, Snow Sculpture Weekend, right? That we're gonna, we're gonna park seven to eight, nine hundred cars. And, but, and we as a community, that's our event. We have to find, you know, we'll have a plan, right? And so this is, this isn't gonna solve that. We have to solve that differently. Either one of, that shouldn't weigh in, either one of these locations. That, that's just a reality that we have to deal with as a community, because we're losing that big reservoir that we've had for a much greater use, but.
And, and Rick, for clarity, this parking lot we're talking about, whether it's on the existing block eleven section, you know, to, to the south near Upper Blue, or if it is relocated out to McCain, is the free park and it's the only free park, correct? And it's not overflow. It's, it is the free parking. So it'll get parked every day. Couple hundred cars to, you know.
Yeah.
Two to four hundred every day and over.
Yeah, probably on average, you'll see anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three hundred. Certainly much smaller than when you think in, we're parking five hundred on a regular basis, but there will probably, there'll be cars every day.
The, the parking agreement states that we could limit that and say, hey, this is only overflow. Is that correct? So their intent is that it's, it's free parking and they wanna use it all day long.
I mean, it, here's the deal. So you got three, everything's built up of three agreements. You had what's called a preliminary agreement. A preliminary agreement actually referred to it as overflow parking. But then when we went and, and then we did what's called the parking, uh, of the actual parking agreement. And it said, and it actually referenced in there that it's only to be used when, when the other two thousand spaces are full.
Mm-hmm.
Which would include our parking structure.
And then when, then the last document, which was called the parking lease agreement, didn't say, you know, one of those things in there. And, and here's, how hard do you wanna push, right? Because the ski area, um, you know, they're working with us really good on this and we haven't held them to any of that. You know, and honestly, the two thousand spaces that they're supposed to provide aren't there today like they were gonna be either. And we don't want some of those. We don't want another two hundred spaces up at PK seven right now. So, um, you know, I think it, it needs to be cleaned up to a certain extent. And, you know, it's, it's old and it allows for us to make some changes in there. I don't, I don't necessarily think we wanna go scrap it and create a new legal document, cause I think that'll open doors that we don't wanna open right now. But I think they're very, very willing to work with us. You know, if we, no matter where we end up, if we can only make X number work here, as long as it's close, they're not gonna, you know. I, I, Shannon and I both got the impression they're very willing to do this.
How many extra parking spaces did we add with the south, uh, gondola structure?
Four hundred and ten, I think.
And those aren't counted in anywhere.
Purpose, and it's set, very much calls that out and says that in the agreement.
Well, there's our number. It's easy.
Are you, on the.
That was six months of negotiation, did it?
Easy.
In, um, proposal, you were saying that it's maybe like four to five hundred cars. Where, if they're sitting on seventy for four hours to get up here, where are we gonna locate the bathrooms? Are they gonna be in the?
Those trees? Well, I think we have to look at, are we using portlets like we do? That's what we've done, uh, on block eleven.
The ski area does.
The ski area is required to put portlets out there during the season. And so you generally, you try to put them out there around, you know, are we gonna have? I think the, the level, do you have a temporary shelter or any kind of a building tucked up in there for your shuttle stop? There's, you know, there's a very small kind of lean-to structure that, that we use out on block eleven right now for a shuttle stop, so.
Thinking about the restaurant, restrooms, do you see any benefit to developing, if we did move it McCain to, if we moved the parking to McCain, developing like a trailhead, like with proper restrooms and that kind of thing? Or is that just?
I think, you asked if there's a benefit? Yes, there's a benefit, but it really, that's gonna be, uh, a decision based. There's some real sensitivity to this that we're understanding, right? As to what that looks like, but we're also talking about what, you know, what does track eight ultimately develop into? Is it, you know, is it a trail system? Is it have activities? Well, how do people access that? And do you need some sort of trailhead parking in the summer? Cause we know, hey, you know, people would park there and just get up so they can have a place to park and then access the trail to go to Frisco too and that recreational use. But it depends on, you know, what, what everybody's comfort level is. But there certainly would be an opportunity to develop it at another higher level. And we talked about even doing that, you know, when we were trying to work in partnership, right? Up in that new development where we're gonna, the bike pass gonna run around by the new water plant and that. I think we lack in this area having any sort of shelter or, uh, if there's, you know, a rain event or storm event or any kind of restoration. So, I mean, just a thousand of users on that trail.
When, uh, when considering the immense amount of work that would have to go into this parking area, um, rock crushing, um, retaining walls, flattening it out, all that stuff, does that provide, does that amount of, of, of capital that would go into, um, creating new, new parking areas? Does that provide any opportunities for alternatives such as, uh, looking at, uh, going into an agreement with CMC and doing a pedestal system or, geez, I, I, I don't, again, just off, off the shooting from the hip, like the DNR spot, like we're already putting a gas shooter in there. Like, do we look over there for, for parking? I know it's only for a year, but, um, or even with the Soul Center, um, I, I don't know what their plans are for parking, but I know they don't operate on the weekends. Have we explored other opportunities? It, it's been, it appears, you know, from some of the comments that it's like, okay, is it, which is worse, you know, driving buses through Breck Terrace, um, in between elementary school and workforce housing? Or go, you know, and taking out this open space and putting, having people, you know, porta-potties in our scenic corridor that's, uh, that's labeled there. And I just, I, I wonder if, is that a false narrative of it's either or?
Well, I think the things that you mentioned are, um, avenues for us to investigate for, um, for those days that we need other alternatives. Because I don't think they have the capacity, with the exception of, uh, uh, do we build some sort of a, you know, terrace or a podium-type parking thing and partner with CMC? And I don't even know if, you know, have we, have we broached that? Because that's a, I mean, that has to be a, you know, a thirty-year to fifty-year commitment to invest those kind of funds and that. Um, whether they would even be open to that. And, you know, what, if you think about how much surface you need to park that many cars? And so you're gonna create that in a, you know, in a podium-type structure, that's a big area that you're putting that on for that. So, no, we haven't done that level of, of work to even see what that would cost. But I, I just have to think that that would be much, much more expensive.
Hey, Jay, uh, to your point too, um, I just wanted to point out that Mark Truckee and I think first did, uh, McCain Master Plan in twenty fifteen. Um, and at that time, we had five point six acres of overflow parking designated basically where it says track eleven A scenic corridor adjacent to Coin Valley Road and a portion of where we're showing it now. Um, McCain's certainly been an evolution over time, um, as different things arise. At one point in that process, I think I told this to Rick, we had a reservoir shown on the site, because that's before we had, um, the tieback into the Blue River and moved the water treatment plant. So there's always an evolution, but in is, in twenty fifteen, we had studied parking here and, um, analyzed properties, including DNR for location of other services. So we can pull that back up, like we were looking at how far and what's the carbon footprint to haul snow to some of these offshoot locations. And everything, you know, has that ripple effect of, you know, if we have put snow over there, then the response time's faster and we're burning this much carbon, blah, blah, blah. But we can pull all of that data from the past, but they did if council wasn't aware that this site was shown as overflow parking back in twenty fifteen. I did just want you to know that, that it was in a larger, a larger scale site. Five point six compared to four point eight acres.
I'm a li- little concerned about, uh, time and wanting to make sure that we have enough timing for the other big discussion that we have.
I wanna ask.
How you wanna kinda take a temperature of people are at or what?
I wanna ask one question that might help, um, at least have, give people knowledge of if there's an option for this. But, um, it seems like the primary issue that we're trying to solve for out at McCain, like Jay listed off some of the things that we've been trying to solve for out at block eleven, so I'm not gonna go back through that. But at McCain, it seems like it's visibility or scenic integrity of the area, right? And then we have. And then we have historic.
Material.
Dredge material out there.
Cost.
And cost. Um, so I guess I'm just wondering. A lot of times we can solve for scenic impacts, like are there things that we can do? Um, not only to, we've talked about a berm and, um, and different landscaping and things like that to sort of separate the parking from the. Open space, but also we've heard from the surrounding community that they look down on that area. So I guess I'm just wondering, is this something that we can solve for? Because the scenic impact seems easier to solve for than the traffic and impacts, the traffic on Airport Road and impacts to the workforce housing.
Well, I. I think yes, I think the scenic impact might be the least impactful thing from my perspective because of. How it sets down in there and and you would create a little bit of buffering. I don't know you're going to create enough buffering that. Somebody higher up, a few of those homes aren't going to be able to see down in. Certainly, uh, a couple of people will on there. You know, I, I don't know what the answer is with the dredge rock. I mean, I don't think you can relocate it and re.
Distribute it.
Re-repurpose it or make it look like it was somewhere else, you know? Um, and the challenge is if we try to push, you know, you go down to where we have other. We don't have dredge, but you have other commercial uses and, you know, some of those areas like twelve A or eleven, we don't want to. If we start pushing the parking farther north, then we're going to have all those vehicles creating, uh, you know, it's just gonna. Really be bad for purview.
Yeah.
And we just can't go down that road, so, you know, we have always. You know, we've been studying traffic flow and parking and trying to address issues for twenty five years here and. Brought experts in and helped us understand traffic movement and flow and. They've always told us that, you know, try to, try to grab some people at the edge of town so that you're not having circling and different things going on in the town. And, and. Everything we've been told by the experts makes this a perfect location. For what we've been told we should be doing, but it doesn't take into account the other things that are. You know, gnawing at your stomach a little bit, which I understand. Might not agree with, but I understand.
Well, I, I know. Um, this is my thought is that I might take it to Jay to say briefly what, where you're standing on it. And then to Todd, where you're standing on it, because I think that you guys are on opposite sides. So that everyone can hear that before they really make their final decision, because I think you guys both have thought about it a lot. And then, um, but I also know that Dick has nothing he wants to say to just throw a whole monkey wrench in things. So, um, Jay, will you kick us off?
Thanks, Kelly. I understand the reasoning behind looking at moving it from. Uh, block eleven and I appreciate that and I don't disagree with that concept of moving it out of there. I disagree with the location. I think that the negatives outweigh the positives. I think there is an issue with egress and having, uh, cars queued up trying to make that light while. Our workforce and our residents are coming down from peak seven and trying to get out. I think we're creating another ski hill road. Um, artificially there. Um, I, I do think that there is environmental impacts that we are. That I'm not qualified to speculate what those are, but, um, with it. With taking that and putting, uh, five hundred cars on there with, um, limited access to. To bathrooms and, and, and what people do when they're spread out. Uh, by four or five football fields down the, uh, the course. And, and then the, you know, along with the environmental impacts, the retaining walls that are needed and, and. Where does that fall for drainage and where does that go? There's just, there's a lot that I have question marks where I feel like the negatives outweigh the positives. Um, I do think that, and, and I also have fear that. This new parking area will use as a staging site for towns' activities for construction, obscene, uh, you know, dump trucks and, and. And whatever on there. And it is, it's still, and we say this all the time in all the projects we discuss on this, on the north side. It's a gateway to town. And, yeah, we can buffer it, but people are, they still be looking down from the upper flume while they're hiking and biking and. Our resident, our, our Upper Blue County residents living up there. Uh, and then our guests that are driving north and south and highway nine are, they still see this. This destruction of, 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 of open space and I know it's open space with quotes. You know, I, I, I look back at some of me and Steve's, uh, planning days and there are shared parking agreements and. In, in the code, it says joint parking facilities is the utilization of joint parking facilities to minimize the proliferation of parking areas. Is encouraged. And that rings true to me so much that we need to find a way to work at this point to work with others. And use all the square acreage that we have as parking lots now before we create more. Um, and then also in the same code, it says public view, the placement and screening of all off-street parking areas from public view is encouraged. And, you know, goes back to, you know, my, my ethos of that, we need to be leaders. And, you know, and do what we, do what we say and say what we do and set, uh, set examples and lead by example. And I don't think that moving forward in this way is doing any of that.
For the other side of the coin, um. You know, it's interesting, Jay, I think you and I agree that. And, and for me, this started off as like, hey, this whole zone's open space. There's, I counted up like seven hundred. What I thought were parking spots that, that maybe weren't utilized on weekends that could handle some of this capacity. Um, I would love to see improvement there, right? Like, how do we more efficiently use blacktop we've got? You know, and learning a little bit about the agreement, it sounds like we've got to have one or. Ski area be open to maybe two spots where we have mass parking, right? Um, so that kind of, I, I think put a crimp in my thoughts of like, yeah, let's look at CMC or. The school district or the justice center, you know, there's a bunch of other spots where there's kind of underutilized parking on the weekends. Um, so with the idea of. Having skier parking be in one or two main spots. You know, as I'm looking through kind of. The, the interest groups and the needs here, the couple stand out, right? Like you've got view corridor for the folks that live in Silver Shekel. Got, you know, there's historic dredge rocks there, um, you've got, um, open space, right? Um, front and center there. Um, you've also got housing. Um, and the runway project to me is awesome, super excited about it. Um, and what's fascinating about that whole zone between highway nine and airport is it's really turning into, yeah, it's, there's a critical mass of housing there. Um, and, and my thinking has shifted to where, and when I think about like the most important pieces in our community. To me, it's the people and we have an opportunity here to really. One, improve the housing kind of feel and neighborhood there by moving that ski area parking. Um, so I like going in the direction of moving the parking. Um, to where. To where, um, moving it out to McCain, my thought there is. You, you take five hundred cars, four hundred cars, whatever it is, out of that zone where it is now. You, you, you aggregate them as they kind of come into town. It really improves that space for the residents of that place and that's the highest need in my mind is that. Our workforce feels home and not overrun by cars on weekends, right, in their neighborhood? So that's important. And then the other piece, and you kind of hit on this with the easements is like. There's an opportunity to maybe add twenty to twenty-five homes on, on that existing park. So I think there's, I feel like we can thread the needle with the win on a bunch of layers here where. We improve the housing field for that new neighborhood and runway. We get more of it. We create super cool park space for that housing that's in that zone on block eleven, right? That there's a ton of acreage there where that's going to feel like a much better. Neighborhood and your, your, your units per acre is going to go down. And, you know, usually I'm the one saying, hey, bump it up, but I think you get more housing and more open space by, by moving that skier parking. So those are wins for me. Um, standing out there today, it was fascinating. I'm, I'm standing there, I'm like, this is the best view in Breckenridge. I don't know if anybody else felt that, but. Standing where the cars would be parked. On that east side of the road, you, you, you had glimpses of the river, you had, you're looking up at the wattle, you had the whole ten mile there. From like a branding perspective, who, who wouldn't want their visitors to park right there and look up at it? Maybe the folks in Silver Shekel, sorry, um, but that zone there to me was magical. And one of the things that, that I've thought a lot about is like. That open space, you kind of whiz right by. Yeah, you catch it, you see it if you're up on the flume, like they usually like stop, like, wow, river looks amazing. Um, I think oddly that, putting the five hundred spots there. And I think there's some traffic impacts we need to look at and manage, right? Like. One left turn and one lane coming out of there is going to be a problem. If they turn right, that's going to be a problem. So we gotta, we gotta make sure the parking gets better. But I, I think actually it helps us celebrate that open space zone. I'd love in a nod to the Breck history folks, preserve a couple of chunks of, you know, a, a portion of the rocks, interpret it. Maybe I, I'd like to see actually some bathrooms there, because I don't think porta potties. Coming in and having a bunch of blue porta potties there really reflects well on the brand of the town. So I, I'd like to almost see a little bit more improvement, nice bathrooms, some interpretation, keep the rocks. To me, that this is the. The best way to thread the needle and kind of hit all the highlights, right? Celebrate open space, take care of our employees first and foremost, add more housing, create more park space for our housing. Ensure that we have a great relationship with the ski area and then really use that as a branding piece to be like, hey, we're all about the.
See what we're dealing with here? All right, Dick.
Yeah, I, I wanted to start by, I, I think. Both sides of this thing are so well intended. I mean, we're, we're trying to do great housing here. And, and that's where this is coming from and I so much appreciate Rick's work and. Laurie and her team and, and everyone's work on this. I, I also weigh the, the, the. Plus, I mean, this is a least of evils situation. I mean, this parking is impactful wherever it is, so. The one piece, and I'm not going to repeat, you know, everything Jay said and Todd said were, were good, but. The one piece we're not, that hasn't been talked about yet is our parking structure that sits nearly empty almost year round. Um, we absolutely need to build that into the equation and, and we need to. Set some real hard goals. The, the, the door is open to, to, to talk with the ski area. We have an existing agreement for that structure right now and how it's managed and the ski area is in control during the winter. Um, however, you know, the, the, these four hundred spots. Um, in our intent to develop, you know, block eleven. Um, opens that door quite widely and I, I think we really, really. Need to, um, aggressively, um, build our parking structure into this, um, discussion. I, I think, I'm, I'm with Jay, I, you know, we, we need to work really hard to, to. Mitigate the impacts to the runway development. Um, gosh, I certainly don't want to lose any of the housing on that. Um, I think the, the right away, yes, we're going to lose the parking on either side, that, that head on, head in parking. But, you know, we're going to have to relocate it and have a, a, a well landscaped, well marked entry and exit to this parking. Now, we're going to need a berm and, and robust landscaping to, to separate the, the runway project with parking. You know, the agreement pretty much says four hundred spots, I'm four hundred spots, you know, I think. It's incumbent upon the ski area to do a deal with, with CMC to. I mean, that was always contemplated and it was in the documents when we, when we did CMC. Um, and, uh, um. You know, I think that they're open to a, to an agreement with the ski company and then I think we strongly encourage them to, to get that deal done. That will in itself push some of the parking down the other end. Um, so I, you know, I would like to see the parking on block eleven be as few as possible. Um, in conjunction with helping facilitate parking, um, raising the, the occupancy rates in our own structure. And, and getting a, a deal done with CMC, so. I, I don't think the negotiating scenes are over yet with the ski company and yes, the, the. Good relationship that we have and, and how well we're working with them right now should help us, but. I hopefully also want to try to strengthen that relationship in this, this process, so. Yeah, I, you know, we, we talk about the, you talk about the, the location on, on McCain. And for me, that's why it should stay open space and it, and it is for our workforce, is for our citizens, is for everyone that lives here. Um, that, that, that's critical to, to maintain out there and, and really protect that gem. We can't let Skrall take over, um, McCain and, and, um. Um, so those are my thoughts.
So, do we have enough time since we already had three people who? Went into detail on their votes that we can just finish this out? Cause we still have a half an hour.
Everybody should speak, I, I think.
So, okay, well, you, you threw me for a loop. You didn't do what you were supposed to.
Changed his mind.
Changed my mind when I was out there looking at it.
You were supposed to ask for a pot.
For block eleven.
I'm gonna, if this is an either or and you put it well, Dick, the lesser of evils right now, which I'll start off saying that's something. I'd really like to understand that, are we truly vetting all the opportunities, the parking garage? Um, I think the one major factor to be able to make an informed decision is cost. Like right now, I don't have a clear idea of how much. One or the other we're looking at in both cases. I think we do need to talk about. Buffering bathroom management, that's a situation with either location that we'd have to manage. But if we're looking at compatible uses, I would, um. I would like to get that parking outside of. Block eleven, the runway, it's, all that parking is not a compatible using. Use with a school and with a housing neighborhood right there, lesser of evils, I think there's going to be. Um, with that housing build out, just. Impacts to our workforce that we can move. Out of there, um, on McCain, of course, there is the scenic impact, there's. Breck histories concerns that I'd like to understand a little more about, um, the significance of that. Area and how it's not maybe replicated in other dredge piles that we do have within the community. So that's something I'd like to chat with you and further vet and understand that. Um, but lesser of evils, if our decision truly is A or B, um, I'd rather not, I'd rather have less of an impact to. Um, a school and housing. Each side had great points, so just to highlight.
Steve?
I'll start off by saying that I came here full time in twenty fifteen. And at that point in time, Elena is right, the idea of moving the parking. Uh, out of the town core was on the table. And I can say that during the time that, as a planning commissioner, we looked at the master plans. We labeled that little strip open space. Only because we couldn't label it as anything else. It was essentially undevelopable. And unusable in any other way. When we started talking about this now. In my mind, it was a no brainer to move the parking. And I'm trying to listen and appreciate everybody else's points. They're all good points. If I put myself in the mind of somebody visiting Breckenridge. And, and I want free skier parking. When I'm driving up highway nine, I come to a, one of our first and best, in my opinion, wayfinding signs. Which is going to tell me to turn right at the next intersection and pull into the parking and there I am. And I don't think that my impression of Breckenridge is improved by. Do I turn on Coin Valley Road or do I go farther into town? Where do I find this parking? If I turn on Coin Valley Road, then I'm gonna go past the wrecker business and all the commercial. Area along there as I wind my way up, looking for the street where I turn into the free parking. Which now is going to be even more complicated if we shift the free parking to the south further. Going through what looks like a residential neighborhood to get to the, with the free parking. It seems to me like we are doing a greater good keeping those cars. At the edge of town than we are putting them into the town. Dick's point about the underutilization of our own parking structure. Is really a good one and something that I think we need to talk to the ski area about. Maybe there's a compromise in this, and Dick pointed it out, if we only have to provide four hundred spaces, why are we going to build five hundred? That's why we find. Provide five hundred there on McCain, can't we put another hundred somewhere else? When we're looking for these alternative places? So, I'm not in favor of overbuilding our parking by one spot. Maybe it was nice that we had seven hundred spots at one point in time. If you want to talk about how, what it looks like coming into town. I have people, when I'm chauffeuring people into town to look around, who look down onto the summer use of. The free parking and they say, what is that? What are all those campers doing about out there? What are all those cars scattered about? We have to do a better job managing the summers and what the parking is like. It may very well be that this parking on McCain. Becomes a summer location where people get on their bikes. And rather than circling around town, finding a place to park and finding a place to get on the bike path. They could park right there, great spot to start biking. I haven't made up my mind, these are both good points, and it's like everybody says, we're trying to decide the lesser of two evils. Um, right now, I'm still not convinced that bringing all those cars into town is the lesser. I think McCain is the lesser. But cost, there's a lot of rocks to move out there. I don't know what that's going to cost us, what we're going to do with them, how we're going to do it. I would like to see, coming from Lori or Rick. The south part of block eleven, where we have that easement coming through there. Mapped out so we can really see what that easement is going to take out of that parcel if we consider that for the parking. And how easy it might be to work around that for housing. Are we going to get more houses in there?
We're gonna back, we're, we're gonna do some more housing stuff on the second meeting in August, so we, we have, uh, we have those drawings, we just couldn't get our hands on them.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to see, standing there, I'm trying to envision, what's this big strip? How many feet on each side of this do we lose? You know, what is the minefield that we're working around there? And that would be helpful to me. But at this point in time, if we're taking a sort of a straw vote, my vote is still for the McCain property.
Thanks. Rika?
You wanted something new? Is that the challenge here?
Say I agree with everything up here and then tell us we wrote.
Great. I do agree with many of the points. I do think to Jay's, one of Jay's original points, we are getting ourselves into a little quagmire of. We really want to do more boots, less cars, but we have this empty parking structure and the first thing people see when they come into town now is going to be this parking spot and people. So, I would, what I would really like as my new point is, I would like to hear from the existing community, right? Does Blue Fifty Two feel really impacted by having that parking in block eleven currently? Because it is a residential neighborhood, to your point, and we are trying to make that. The space fit the use. Um, so I would like to hear more from those folks about how they feel about parking. Where it is now, if they're saying it's not a big impact, my instinct is to leave the parking where it is now, because that also. It's also more than five hundred spots right now, correct? Yeah, so that's going to shrink dramatically, and I think, correct or not?
Well, and it's all because it does, it's, because it's rarely that many cars, it's far removed.
Right, but it's, and sorry, I was, I said Blue Fifty Two, I met everyone along Airport Road is who I would like to hear from, to be. More people. Um, and I understand what you're saying, but it's still, it's putting, it puts traffic on Coin Valley, whether you live at Breck Terrace or. An Airport Road, like, it puts traffic on Airport Road and Coin Valley regardless of where you live or work on that stretch. So, my instinct is to leave it as, as is if we are taking a vote right now.
Well, I feel, um, all of the things that everyone said up here make so much sense and. I've had all of the thoughts and gone around and around in circles, but I do feel really strongly that, um, my job up here. And because, you know, I really try to represent the families and the Wellington neighborhood and the people in the community, and so. As someone who could very easily have been a person living right next to the ski area parking, like you guys said, it was right at the cones and you'd have ski area parking. I really feel strongly that we have to protect the neighborhoods and that means moving the cars out of that neighborhood. I think Jay's points about the traffic, um, are really important to consider. Um, all those people that were dumping into the, um, on Coin Valley Road and at that light, so. Definitely, we don't want to have a season of huge backups. But I do think, um, we need to do our best with screening and berms, and I love the idea of working with. Breck history to maybe identify some of those rocks. I think. The dredge rocks out there are really cool, and when you look on the mapping and you can see how they're laid out in the fan, it's amazing. But when they're there and not appreciated and you're just blowing in and out of town, I don't think that they're, um, celebrated in the way that they could be. And I think that we could take this opportunity to have a great trailhead that celebrates what's there, protects our community and. Um, is screened as much as possible. And obviously, the management of what's going on out there is super important. But I love the use of the parking garage and open spaces, all of that makes. Complete sense and we need to do better at that, so.
You know, we never like to see four, three, right? Because that means almost half of us. I don't necessarily agree with that, but what it does is it provides some direction and feedback, and there's a lot of unknowns on this and costs is one of those. And, uh, honestly, we didn't want, I think we have to do a much deeper dive to get a better handle on that, and we didn't want to go down that road. Unless we thought they were at least had a majority of the people that were open to looking at this. Uh, it could be that we start looking at this and we uncover things that might shift or change, uh, Carol's mind or somebody else's mind a little bit on this. I would still like to try to look harder at this, having heard this, talk to the ski area more. Look for ways to shrink this number down, have smaller impacts, try to hat, try to salvage more of those dredge rocks. Maybe in where we locate this or do something. I think if we, you know, take, take what we've heard and try to do things that might minimize some of that impact and, uh, come back. Maybe with something that might just make her feel a little better on that and maybe, uh, you know, we minimize some of that, so. Yeah, let us, let us look at that.
Great.
Is that good?
It's great.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rick. I appreciate all your work on this. I know this has been a long project for you and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go to that.
Peace of looking at both of these parcels.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, it, it, it's also, it's just, I think it's really what made Shannon and I go, you know, we just. We're, we're just, we're, we're working so hard on something that is twenty-five years old, an agreement that, you know, needs to be reshaped. And how we're addressing this stuff, and so, it, it opens that door, and I think they're, they're willing to have that door open, so. Let us continue to work on that.
We still got to solve ten, twelve days of it.
Yeah.
To solve snow sculpture, we can solve that, then everything else.
We're not canceling sculptures, no sculpture. Be clear.
You know, that's giving me the headlines in the paper.
Nope, I just clarified it, I just clarified it. That's not something we're considering.
We gotta jump into the other stuff?
Yeah, we got to, because we only have.
Okay.
A minute, so we, we're slated to go to six fifteen. And we could go a hair longer, so just so people are aware with their comments and otherwise.
Excited to be here talking about the runway neighborhood. It seems like we've talked about it here or there, but this feels like a real kickoff. Um, for us and a kickoff and that will help our design team figure out what to put to paper. That's going to meet your expectations and your goals for this project, so. Um, the memo, you know, our goal really is to take what you tell us today. And get our design team working on it, come back to you and say, did we get it right? Um, how do we need to move it around a little bit and actually have some costs associated with some of the decisions that are the directions you're going to give us? So, we will be coming back based on what you tell us today. Um, and, um, you know, overall, obviously, this isn't the first neighborhood we've done. We've got ten neighborhoods out there, lots of housing out there, and there are lessons learned certainly from those projects, so we're going to incorporate those lessons. Whether it's about the deed restriction or, you know, the just due diligence of the site, um, all those sorts of things that we've learned, but. Um, in terms of the overall goal is, um, to do a project that incorporates lessons learned and meets the needs of our workforce. Um, so, um, you all did want to talk about who it serves, you know, our thoughts, we want to really target that one hundred percent AMI, this would be just. A different project from Staples in terms of our price points will be shifted down. Um, I think this will bring in a lot of first time home buyers, people that might be renting right now. Um, we laid out, I think it's, um, ten-ish or so, um, specific topics. That we would like to go through and get council direction on those topics, and we can go one by one, and. Our preference would be, for example, to talk about unit count and unit type together, those two are pretty related. Um, but get the council's direction on those topics, then we would go to unit size, then go to market rate and just go through them, and I think the memo. Outlines the issues, I don't need to read the paragraph to you. Um, so we can start with sort of the question about unit count and unit type. Um, we had proposed, um, a split, obviously, of single families, duplexes, townhomes, kind of a third, a third, a third is just our initial concept. Um, and we thought we could get probably about ninety-nine units plus or minus, um, add a necessary ADU to every single, single family. Um, so that's the sort of rough idea about unit count, unit type, does that sort of sound right to you all? Or there anything there that we should tell our design team, do this or do that?
Do people like the unit count, unit type?
We tell you in concept one or concept two?
And we're not even really, you know, those concepts.
It's like only five.
Just a fit test, so they were really.
It's like approximately a hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
I think in terms of what you saw today with the triplexes, you know, and if we're designing stuff, how do they live? Would you rather, would you rather see more single family duplex type units out there with less. Town and home type things, and I think we're, that's where we're really, as quickly as possible, try to find out where people stand on that.
Housing types, I mean, you know, um, we're providing a little, uh, different price points and different housing types, would we rather. Have, uh, I mean, a more Wellington Lincoln Park, which is just single families.
And we know we could sell those all day long, right?
Yeah, sell them all day long.
Maybe if, like, not everybody has to speak on every single thing, if you have a strong feeling about something, then let's just. Go through this quickly if we can, just to give them an idea on everything. So if you feel like. You need to say something here, please do.
I'll just say that I am for having more of the duplex, triplexes and having the, you know, the entry entrance in of the. Yeah, love the workforce for that first homeowner, then that would be my preference.
I'm only laughing because I had literally just said to Melanie at the Staples, I was like, I just want more single family homes.
We're doing well so far.
Do it, Jay, and I think in a lot of neighborhoods where we don't. Separate the housing completely with the design, so the triplexes are integrated with single families, it's not just one side's. Triplexes, quadplexes, they're.
You don't want the haves and the have nots.
Right.
One question on that, though, if we were to look into kind of changing the AMI, so there might be some triplexes that are a hundred and twenty percent. Some single families that are a hundred percent, would you still want to see those mixed up if we were offering different price points that are, that are more affordable across the board?
I think that would change it, if it's for a design perspective, which helps us maximize the space or use it most efficiently, yes, but I think. It is nice to have a commingled neighborhood with different housing types, was my preference.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
I would like to see more single family homes and, um, with detached garage and ADUs that are required to be rented. I know I'm skipping ahead, but that's part, that's part of the more single family homes discussion, because it's our last big lot.
I'm with Carol, well said, with the integration, when possible, if possible. Um, I like a balance of, uh, of the single family and the multi-unit, um. I'd like to get as many of the multi-unit in as we can. I mean, I kind of looked at concept one, I said, gosh, seems like we could probably get more of these in here. I don't think they should have garages, I think affordability is more important than a garage on the, on the multi-family units, um. I, um. Let's see, um. I, I like the idea of. I, I, I would mix it up with the ADUs and the single family where maybe have some of the detached, like Kelly said, but also have some. Where it's a choice, you know, you have that fourth room and it can either be an ADU or it can be a. Fourth bedroom or an office or a family room or whatever, it's, it's kind of gives the, the owner a choice, um. Um, so, and then financing this thing, I, I would love to, we.
Hold on, we're not on financing.
Well, it's a piece of it. I mean, I would just love to, to throw it to the finance team and get their ideas.
The finance team?
You know, instead of us always trying to figure it out and throwing it to him to manage it, is to actually start. And go, what are your ideas to help us figure out this, this knot to try to pay this, you know, twenty million?
All for that.
I will say on that note, we did just receive a two million dollar grant for this project, but that was a good, a two million dollar grant towards infrastructure on this.
More of that, please.
Yes.
Is a really important, it's our last one, and so those comments, it's been said before, I really echo that.
If we move the parking, I think we can add more triplexes, duplexes and single families. And, and I like Kelly's idea of, um, of all the single families being detached with ADUs, it makes it more affordable. And then to me, I love that layer of, it, it hits kind of both ends of the spectrum, right? And, and I'd love two parking spots with every ADU, because ultimately, you end up with two folks in many of those, so. That's my big ask, two spots on the ADU.
Two spots for the ADU. We're gonna drop what you tell us.
You can get it all, right, Laurie?
See what we can get.
I think Todd hit my point that if we move the parking, we have more room for more single families. And the single families that could be next to the school. With an, with a difficult lot to build them on, could be very creatively placed in a different kind of a neighborhood style. I agree with Carol completely that we don't want to segregate any particular kind of housing. We just put it all together, it's a community, and we fit it in, uh, in a manner that creates visual. Interest, not just a row of houses or a row of apartments, condos, so. Or a row of apartments, condos. So I think we're on the right track. I think we can accomplish what everybody has suggested so far.
Rika, nothing to it. Well done. See how, see how it's done, people? All right, well, that's the next.
Laurie.
Did you want to go to size or market rate?
Well, um, yeah, um, I, let's talk a little bit. I assume you all have consensus that we should not do any market rate. And that they should be appreciation capped units. I think you will see our data that shows what the impact of the white deed restriction is versus a full deed restriction is. It makes a big difference in terms of long-term affordability. So that's what we're recommending for this project. The ADUs, it seems like. You know, we are not aware of anybody else that's done ADUs as part of a deed restricted project. So there's not a, you know. Hey, this is best practice for deed restricted. So there's, we need to understand better. How we're thinking about managing those. I, I heard Kelly say that. The ADUs, if we provide them fully built out. Should be rented and not used by a family member. And I wonder if there's consensus, if we provide it fully built out, that it should be a rental ADU. Is there consensus that every single family should have an ADU or some should just have a fourth bedroom?
I really, I go back to, and I'm not disagree with Kelly, just on one point is that. Go back to what we talked about in our retreat and I, I think that looking at incorporating the ADU into the structure with a separate entrance. I think that furthers our sustainability goals that allows for more flexibility for growing parents or growing families. And I, I just, I, I work with a lot of people that live in Valley Brook and I see how. Great of a starter house that has been for so many of our people in, in management and, and how. Quickly they outgrow it, but yet there's very few options at that point. And so I really like the idea. Of, you know, some of these units having incorporated news that are rented when, when it's. Possible and then also uses a bedroom when families grow.
I don't know what that design would even look like.
Uh, she gave us some ideas of like, we, we talked about a little bit at the retreat. I won't rehash it, but.
Well, that makes sense, but where it's a bedroom versus a full ADU.
So Carol, I think the other thought there would be, when we talk about finished versus unfinished, I think it gets a bit confusing. So when you look at Wellington, that was fully unfinished. So anyone would have to come in, insulate drywall, things like that. Whereas we could have the opportunity to either build a four bedroom home that could be, have plumbing roughens. Electrical outlets, things like that. But then it would be on the homeowner to actually put in that kitchenette, put in. You know, furnish it, things like that. So we wouldn't supply a, a full-on kitchen. And then at that point, they'd have to go through permitting. So that's when we would be able to realize, oh, they're renting. We need to start monitoring that, things like that. So I think there's, there's a couple of options within the ADUs of. Really supplying the kitchen versus just supplying the bedroom.
Is there a preference?
Yeah.
There's a cost to building. That cost could put it over that cell phone. And we're subsidizing that and we're subsidizing an ADU. And we're justifying that because it's another rental property, right? That adds to our account and we expect it. I thought it. So that's where we're going to subsidize this to be managed. Or if we don't build it out and give them the option, they're the ones paying for it, then they have the option how they use it.
But don't you. Or, or I don't know, did we see it like, when I, I lived in Wellington for thirteen years and I saw. Home, you know, homeowners going in and putting in the outlets themselves, hanging the drywall and not, not permitting it at all. And I wonder if we open ourselves up where if we do have it for, if we do finish it. And it is assumed to be a rental unit with rental income, then doesn't that cease the need to subsidize the cost of it? Because there will be rental income on there if the homeowner so chooses?
They can't realize that when they go to get the mortgage. So they'd be, they'd have to qualify for a four bedroom home. They can't say, well, I'm going to rent it for X. Can I qualify for more? So technically they're already qualifying. To spend that money each month on their mortgage for a four bedroom home, whether they get that rental income or not, or vice versa, they still can't afford it.
With the lease in place.
Because it's in the same unit. So even if it's a rental, because it's on the same parcel. So if you buy a duplex and you bought both sides of the duplex, you could realize that, but you can't when it's the same parcel property.
Great. Thank you, Melanie.
But I think, I don't know if we have some clarity around there. I mean, we could do a little, if we don't do ADUs on all the single families, we could fully finish them out. And sell them at a slightly higher price. There's an expectation that they be rented. Then we could also have some just straight up four bedroom units. I mean, so I think maybe that's the best way.
I think if you can have that level of variety, that's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. Say, give us some true ADUs built out.
Try to come back in here around September, should touch base with you all on some very preliminary sketches and stuff. People get too far down the road and get some feedback.
I think this was sort of the toughest one.
Sounds like we're hearing that generally people want to see a mixture of the type of housing units and. How they're integrated. Either they, we just don't want eighty percent, you know, townhomes over at this point.
We think, you know, this is the best part of the project, getting to design it, make sure that we get it designed and we like it. Then you get into the grueling building of it and then do it again when you're selling it. So. This is super helpful for us to give to our design group and we will come back with a couple of variations based on what we're hearing. I think I'm hearing pretty strong preference for detached. ADUs. And two parking spots for each ADU, which is different than what we had anticipated. Your parking spot's up there.
I mean, I do think. I'm not sure. I certainly had a preference for detached, but I'm not sure anyone else did. And so you did as well. So maybe there's two who are interested in detached and having the real ADU that has to be rented.
Yeah.
But it sounds like there's a fair amount of interest in the.
Attached.
Option to have the.
Four bedroom.
Four bedroom or with the door to make it a.
Well, maybe we do a couple of versions. I mean, we're planning to come back with at least two versions and then we can put some real costing. Estimates and figure out, is there a cost impact for attached versus detached? And, you know, solar access is another one that we heard that. You have more opportunity with attached to get better solar orientation, but I don't know if that's true until we. Sit down and draw them out. So maybe we'll come back with at least two versions is what our plan is.
We, I know Todd would like to see the two parking spaces for the ADU so that I can go look at. Four parking spaces, right? For each of those units. So how does everyone else feel about that?
I, I don't.
I hear Todd's point and agree, but maybe some of them are going to have to be. Remote like in a parking lot somewhere. I mean, they may not be able to be on site because the land's so bad. But I hear his point. I hear your point. It's a good one.
And I do think this location is right in town. I mean, if ever we were going to say only have one. Car for the two of you, this would be the location to do.
And maybe recharge for that remote parking so that it's a distance in it.
My preference always is to sort of, sort of put as much parking as you can sort of remote. Because twenty years from now, you know, are we still going to be having the number of vehicles we have? No, I hope not.
Yeah.
Um, and if you have your parking more in sort of remote lots, we learned this down in Denver where they didn't put the parking right in front of the units. They put the parking over here in a sort of little lot. And you're close, you're in proximity, but someday when we see that we don't even need that surface parking anymore, you have an opportunity to do something with that old parking lot. That no longer serves a purpose. So I kind of prefer sort of de-bundling the housing unit from the parking as much as possible, putting it over there. But we'll play with it. And obviously you read what is in the memo in regard to the deed restriction and the lottery process. We're not proposing sort of any priorities just because we, we think we get sideways of fair housing. I mean, that's a long ways from now, but we're going to start pulling all these pieces together. Sustainability, obviously, super important. We're going to do everything at zero, look at geothermal. And use the social equity lens. We appreciated Flor's conversation, but I think we have enough sort of. Direction from you to come back with at least two, maybe three options and see if we got it right.
I have a bigger question, rely.
I don't think we, yeah, I mean, unless it's pertinent to being like developing the runway project right now.
Well, my question is, what, what comes first? I mean, if we were going to do a partner like we did at Staples. Are we going too far now to prevent that? Or is all this just so preliminary that we'd still be easy to bring in a partner? Like we did at Staples? Or have we decided not to do this?
We've decided in terms of the structure of how it gets developed, whether it's a situation. No, no.
All right. So we're leaving all options open still.
I mean, if we're going to task this team, there's some finance folks on this team as well. So, you know, how do we reduce the town subsidy? You know, that's the bottom line is, you know, what's the creative mechanisms to reduce our subsidy on this?
Awesome.
All right. Everyone good?
Any, any sort of last minute suggestions or thoughts about what you want this to be?
So we'll do the redevelopment. And we'll announce who we're going to be working with and then we'll start being the.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you guys very much for all the work you've done.
I have one really little thing. It's only connected in a minor way to this, but I never noticed this before. In the definition of. Employee. Housing and that's, this is section nine dash one dash five definitions and doing this out to Kirsten, but I. I think our equity discussion really made me think about this. We talk about employee housing and we define it as. Where is it now? I lost it. Occupied thirty hours a week, so on and so forth, together with such person's spouse and minor children. I'm wondering about that word spouse in there.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so well, so I am aware of that definition. We also have our division of housing regulations, which I think broaden things, but we can. Cause that's in the development code. We also adapted a new set of regs. Recently to create the division of housing. We can make sure that if we need to clean that up. Cause you're, you're right. We've gotten away from that and that is an equity issue.
Oh yeah, status of family, family status is a.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I had.
Great. A journey. Can go right in and eat. Do anything else. Everything's. Yeah, okay. The time is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four to order. Roll call, please, Helen.
Rika Page.
Present.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. All right, approval of the minutes, town council, town council minutes, July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Everyone sound there right? Accurate? All right, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Shannon, okay.
I'm sorry. Did you have a question for me?
Do you have any changes to the agenda? All right, no worries. Perfect. You knew what I was going to say. All right, communications to council. This is a time for public comment. This is non-agenda items only. And it's a three-minute time limit. So you guys feel free to come down to the lectern and introduce who you are. And if you're talking about anything besides the appropriation for fiscal year beginning January one, then you're ready to go.
Hi, I'm Wayne Haley. I live over in Summit Cove. I've been in the county twenty-nine years, thereabouts. You know, we have a, a very large aging population in Summit County. Including a lot of people that are mountain bikers. And the county's goal, and I'm assuming this is also shared by the town of Breck. Is that we ought to allow people to age in place in Summit County. As an, and an important part of aging in place to me is allowing people like myself. To continue recreating like we've always done until we can no longer do it. And for those like me that have a passion for mountain biking. That means that I need access to an e-mountain bike today to ride like I used to ride. Others, people say, well, can't you ride all of these gravel roads? And I say, no, I can't because I hate those things because they are no fun. And then they say, well, you've got all motorized trails that you can ride. And I say, that's a very severe to me, a very severe safety issue. Because I'm on a forty-two pound bike that goes at max speed of twenty miles an hour when I'm pedaling. Versus a motorcycle that weighs two hundred and sixty pounds, thereabouts or more. And probably can go sixty, seventy, maybe even eighty miles an hour. To me, those are incompatible uses of those motorized trails. So part of the answer, I think, is to allow e-mountain bikes access. To county open space and town of Breckenridge open space trails, which are currently closed to e-mountain bikes. For example, in the Golden Horseshoe and in Tenderfoot Meadows. And toward that end, we, a couple of us had a meeting with Nina Waters, who's one of the board of county commissioners. Open space there works for her. She's going to put us on the agenda so that we can bring this issue forward to OSAC. And I've been told by Tony Overlock. That Duke Barlow wants to bring that issue forward in Bozak as well. And we would like to be part of that conversation. So. Because this problem is not going to go away. It's only going to get worse. And when I say problem, it's not, it's an issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian.
I'm Tom Liston. I'm Silverthorn and I'm following up basically on what Wayne started out with. I've been mountain biking and along with my wife for thirty years. And been involved in biking community in a variety of ways, trail building, being rides. On boards of biking organizations. And. I've aged out to where I no longer, as Wayne, can no longer make climbs on the steeper climbs on a standard bike. I'd have to get up and push my bike up the hill, which is not the goal. An e-bike allows me to do, to, to keep on riding. And the current rules don't allow me to access the trails. That I've been working on for the past fifteen years. We've put a lot of hours into building new. We've put a lot of hours into building new trails, maintaining existing trails. I feel I have a right to get back on those trails. When I first started riding back in ninety-three, there was a issue with hikers, anti-mountain bikers thinking we were going to destroy the trails and we'd have collisions and be hurting hikers. That very quickly was resolved through education of mountain bikers on proper trail etiquette. Right now, we're up against mountain bikers hating on e-mountain bikers because we might pass them climbing a hill, something of that order. I feel that we should be able to address their concerns similar to what was done with the hikers. But we need to have a forum to allow us to do that. Right now, we're kind of locked out on it. Discussions, the U.S. Forest Service was considering allowing e-mountain bikes in the Swan Mountain rework of that EA. And then when they talked with Bozak and OSAC, there was pushback, and so they dropped the idea. So they're not opposed. Primary resistance to e-mountain bikes on mountain bike trails is OSAC and Bozak. And they're close to us. We had a, last year, OSAC had a meeting to talk about their master plan. And a member was there and raised the issue that they should have e-mountain bikes on their master plan. And he was thrown out of the meeting. In fact, the first page on their e-bike page, first line is, at this time, Summit County is not involved considering EMTB as a natural surface trails. But we would like to have an opportunity to talk to them and talk to Bozak, where Bozak, we understand, has similar attitude as OSAC. So all we're asking for is a forum to meet with them, address their concerns in any way we can, and hopefully come to a compromise that would allow e-mountain bikes on mountain bike trails. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Perfect timing.
Hi, guys. My name is Mindy Armstrong. I have lived in Breckenridge for forty-three years. This is about the watering restrictions. I know that the watering restrictions are new to the town of Breckenridge this summer. I'm mostly in support of this policy, especially for watering grass overnight and less frequently. I am a landscape contractor, and this is my twenty-second year with this company I have now in business. Prior to that, I worked at other companies. So I've been doing this for a really long time. I have properties all throughout the county. Every one of my properties is different. Some clients have minimal landscaping, whereas other clients have very extensive landscape. But all the clients are proud of their landscape and make huge investments in their properties, especially with the flower baskets and gardens. If you're reading the policy, there is nothing noted about flower gardens and flower baskets. Many of the properties that we care for have gardens and baskets, which are on a specificing, specific watering schedule. For example, the drip may turn on multiple times throughout the day, morning, midday, afternoon. Usually, we run these zones for two to five minutes at the most, two to three times daily, depending on the situation. The flower baskets especially tend to dry out quickly in the dry air and windy conditions. I do understand the policy's intention of watering smarter with grass, but gardens in Breckenridge are a different story when they are made of domesticated perennials and annuals, which need to be watered more frequently. The town of Breckenridge, the golf course, other landscape contractors, and the public are also watering throughout the day, especially the flower baskets lining Main Street. If we're going to enforce this policy, everyone needs to be warned, including the town. We need to make arrangements for next summer. That would include less flower baskets and maintained gardens, especially on Main Street, which in my opinion would be sad, as these gardens and baskets bring so much joy to locals and visitors. Last week, some of my clients in Breckenridge Main Street had an officer visit their properties and demand the clients follow the new watering policy immediately or face large fines. He even threatened to turn off their water. This is not okay. This was not okay. This happened on the seventeenth and eighteenth last week. These clients have flower gardens on Breckenridge Main Street, no grass at all, no grass. I personally feel that their gardens add to the aesthetic of Breckenridge. They also pay large taxes to the town on their properties, as well as paying for the water they use. The next step for Breckenridge is to include more specifics to their watering policy and understand each irrigation system is different. Watering grass is completely different from watering flower gardens. And, and possibly include starting with new sod, new grass, shrubs, and drip. Those all should be excluded. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Mindy. I'll wait till we're done.
Hi, my name is Dave Miller. I'm from Mountaintop Explorium. I'm the executive director there. Just hit my year mark. Wanted to give you a quick update on a bunch of things that are happening at Mountaintop. First, and yesterday, we just approved a updated mission, which is a community resource that nurtures connection between children and their world through exploration, creativity, and relationships. And I think a key thing that I want you to be aware of is that we're, is the phrase, "community resource." Really focused on Breckenridge and Greater Breckenridge, as in Summit County. And then we approve the values of inclusivity, education, curiosity, and collaboration. And we're excited for all the things and all the people we collaborate with. Town of Breck is one of those. Some of the programs that we've really been pushing off and focusing on are our childcare programs. We never want to be known as a childcare program, but we know that parents do access the programs that we offer for childcare reasons. And we're really excited to be enriching childcare. So we offer a lot of STEM-based, fused with some outdoor education. And depending on the season, we get outside as much as we can. One of the big things that we did starting last January, thanks to some of your support, is offering an after-school program. We doubled capacity. We used to walk kids from Breckenridge to our Small Children Museum. And now we are offering those programs directly at Breckenridge and Upper Blue Elementary. And we're also offering those on a sliding fee scale so that children who qualify for free and reduced lunch are able to access that program for as little as a dollar for after-school. Our outreach was pretty strong. We had about forty-five students. We averaged across all of those programs qualified for free and reduced lunch. And large majority were Spanish-speaking. So I thought that was great success. We had about seventy-five unique students for our after-school and school break programs. The other big thing is our summer day camp program. We base that out of the Village Ski School. We've been able to serve over one hundred Summit County residents. And about seventy-five of those are from the Breckenridge community. With that, we don't offer a sliding fee scale. I hope to in the future, depending on fundraising. Right now, we've been able to distribute scholarships, and we've been able to offer over ten thousand dollars in scholarships. We have a typical rate of a hundred and fifteen dollars. And for our local students, we offer that at only sixty-five dollars a day. So a lot of successes within those programs. We're excited to keep expanding those programs as funding allows and just seeing what we can do to serve more students as the need increases here in Breckenridge. And then the last thing is just our Explorium. In our children museum, we're doing everything possible to get families to access that. We're offering free access for a lot of different groups. And so far, we've hit about a hundred and forty-seven visits this year. So, thanks so much.
Thanks, Dave.
Well done.
I'm Carol Lockney. Live on Broken Land Strive. Been here for a while. And I'm really here to test my new hearing aids, which are hard. Anyway, I'm here with a real quick, quick to start, because we had some Norwegians over the winter, and here they just left, and they were kind of on fact fiction, collecting information, because they thought Breckenridge was spectacular. They never expected it to be like this. Sigurd, every time he goes home, talks about Breckenridge and stuff, funny stories. But they were truly surprised. And, and some of these, they're attorneys, and they're, they're kind of high up in the government too. And they're going to take some of their ideas that you have, especially for summer use, because they have a big gondola already in their town of Vos, Norway. But to make a long story short, they were shocked, because I have a little in my, on my counter, I have drinking water, because I don't drink town water, because it has stuff in it I can't get out with a normal filter. So I get all my water from Arapahoe Basin and the spring there. And I put it in a little net zero, so it takes out the other stuff, but it won't take out fluoride. And they said it was outlawed in Norway. So I did a little research, and it's not only just Norway. It's also in like a hundred, almost a hundred percent. Can I bring this down? And you can pass it around while I I gave a copy to James, and he said he'll look into it. And, and why add us something that we really don't need? And they don't like it for the reasons I stated there. It's compulsory. There's no clear proof that it really helps your teeth. And now I don't care about my teeth. I still have all my originals, but it's my brain I care about, and I don't know what that does there. So I'm just asking you to maybe revisit that a little bit and just take it out of there, especially since you're advertising how pristine our water is, and you're dumping fluoride in it. And I don't think, over at Summit Cove, I don't think they have fluoride in it, or Silverthorn. Have to ask Tom Doherty. I, I don't think they have it there. And where else? Oh, even Keystone, I don't think have it, and I don't know about Fisso. So, but I'm also going to, because they were shocked when they went to see Stephen, and they saw all the astroturf being.
All right, Carol, your three minutes are up.
And I'm not going to talk about it now, but I'm going to do more research, and I'll see you in two weeks.
We look forward to it.
Sure. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
New faces. Wow.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you guys all for coming. It's really nice to get feedback from the public, so we really appreciate you taking the time. Tom and Wayne, we have a master plan that the Bozak uses to analyze, you know, different impacts and different cost-benefit analysis. And so they'll continue to do that if you want to. We'll certainly pass along the information that you visited to us, but all of those meetings are open, and you're welcome to attend and do public comment there anytime. But obviously, in the background, we will talk with staff as well. And I'm not sure if there's an interest to bring it up to the council, but we'll continue to consider this issue. Thank you very much for coming. And Mindy, as far as the watering restrictions go, staff had heard that there was some confusion about what is being regulated and what's not. First of all, incredibly sorry about the police issue. We always try to do enforcement in this town, and that should be a good interaction. So we will definitely follow up on that. But in addition, hand-watering and drip systems are not part of the regulation. It's sprinkler heads. And so hopefully, you can encourage clients to get transferred onto hand-watering, or that's obviously difficult, but drip systems. And then baskets and things that are on the, you know, that's hand-watering. So those wouldn't be regulated either from the town or from. Okay, so great to hear that. Sounds like it's really just a communications issue, and we'll certainly work with staff that is in charge of putting out that information to make sure that everyone has the right information. Thank you very much for coming and giving us that feedback. Dave, great job at Mountaintop. Lots of good feedback from the camps. My daughter loved it. And appreciate you leaning into the community and all the ways that you're doing that. And then Carol, you are right. We love to be pushing that everybody drink our beautiful mountain water. And James, I'm sure will stay up to date with the best science and do what he can for the community. And he'll, I'll let him, he's the expert, decide what's right. So. All right, so we don't really have more of a discussion than that for public comment, but we really do appreciate you guys coming. And, and we'll continue to work through these issues with staff in the background. Thank you, Carol. All right, we're going to move on to Breck Tourism Update. Lucy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start with bad news and get that done. Lodging update, we're still running down, we're about seventeen percent down on room nights year-to-date. What's interesting, so if you play that forward by year-end, I think we'll probably be down about ten thousand room nights and roughly ten to fifteen percent down if things continue the way they are now. ADR is up a bit, so revenue won't be that bad. What's really, what's interesting is our competitive, I mean, everybody in the mountain communities are down. Travel overall globally is way up, but people are going back to their normal travel patterns. Most of our competitive set is down in similar proportions to us, and that's Steamboat Park City, Vale Aspen. Vale Aspen, yeah. So that's the group we look at most closely with us. We're down a little bit more than the rest of them, but it's because we were the only group that was up last year. So we're starting from a higher point. So we can't really figure out why, but we're changing, we're testing our creative. We've got new creative this year, so we're bumping it against old creative or running both. We are going deeper in the funnel, so a little more call-to-action oriented media, also changing the media to more drive market focus. So it's shorter decision time and things like that. But I think at this point, we're planning on, you know, not hitting the goal of three to four percent growth for this summer. We, what's interesting is we're not hearing, I mean, people are not shy about letting us know when something's not right. And we're not getting a lot of feedback about like, wow, business is way off. What are you doing about it? Things like that. People are kind of okay. So Bill and I weren't really trusting that. So he put out a survey yesterday, Survey Monkey, in our download, just to ask people about their business levels, so that we would have this information before the board meeting on Thursday. We got back fifteen like right away, and it's split. More people say they have less business than last year, but it's, it's not a hundred percent. So we'll see how that goes. But what we'll be talking about in our board meeting this week, because it's right before we're getting ready to approve our budget request and the plan to go with that, is really having a deeper discussion on what should the goal be for next year. Like, we've been running three to four percent growth. Didn't hit it last year. Probably are not going to hit it this year. So do we want to have that be a bigger goal for next year and try to catch us up? Or are we really in that space, roughly two thousand nineteen levels of room nights, where this is a good, it's enough? You know, I don't know the answer. But that's the deep dive we'll be doing with the board this week. And then we'll follow up with all of you when we come into the work session for our annual meeting with you all, and that's August twenty-seventh, just to make sure we're all on the same page. The town budgeting process or the town business goals will be different from the BTOs, Dave, and Dave's team and my team. We've talked about that. So they'll be more conservative and budget flat, probably. And my sense is that BTO will budget for a little bit more than that. So that's in play there. And then for twenty-five, I think because we've had two years now of decline. And like, again, most destinations have. It's not unusual across, across the country, really. But I think what we're going to do is we're going to take our strategy that we have used in marketing for, since I've been at the BTO, and I think we're going to flip it upside down. We've always started high in the funnel, which is a long-term play. That's the branding. That's prospecting. That's casting the net for new business. It's never as effective as when you go deeper in the funnel, targeting people that already know about you or have been here before. So I think next year, we'll start in the middle. And if we lay in a good base, we can always fly up and do branding later in the year, rather than be in this position. So we'll talk in more detail about that when we're back in August. We are taking action, but I don't think we can do enough, like throwing money at the problem isn't going to fix it. We're pretty sure about that. So, um, we're there. The other thing we'll be doing, um, in our board meeting this week, we're asking, um, Sean Mayer from RRC to come and give our board a quick overview of the CAST resident survey. Um, CAST is the Colorado Ski Town, Association of Ski Towns. And they did the survey across five counties and I'm presuming you all have seen that. Okay. So we're going to take that. I wanted to be sure our board is aware of that. And then bump that against the Breckenridge because clearly our, our residents are feeling a little better about tourism than maybe the average. So, uh, those two things, and then just kind of end with some good news. We're down to, uh, we're up to, um, 1,900 downloads on the app. So we're pretty happy about that. So that's happening. And then, uh, for Oktoberfest, which is, um, September 13 through 15, uh, Sarah just opened the, uh, site for volunteers and we had 10 volunteers in the first minute. So people are ready. Any questions or anything else?
Think of going lower in the funnel to start with. You still are intending to stay out of state? Yes?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're not, yes, yes. And when I say drive, that means like Nebraska, not Florida.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, moving on to continued business, second reading of council bills, series 2024. Council bill number 18, series 2024, an ordinance of the town of Breckenridge setting forth the annual supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024. Tracy.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Tracy Lambert, Senior Accountant, here for the second reading for the appropriation for the supplemental budget. The details from the first reading hasn't changed, but in summary, it considers a land purchase for our open space fund, property purchases, the expansion of a childcare facility, and then the community investment and infrastructure on our housing projects.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for Tracy? Anyone in the public wish to comment on council bill number 18, series 2024? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass council bill number 18, series 2024, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second, oh, sorry, Steve.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin. Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. We have no new business and no resolutions. So moving on to planning matters, um, planning commission decisions, anything to discuss here? No. All right. Report of the town manager and staff.
Um, so I just have one thing for you tonight. Uh, we have been talking with Excel about putting a, um, natural gas injection site at the DNR property. We've been kind of going around and around and what they've come back with is a request to use the property for just one year. Um, and to put the injection site, what looks like to be like exactly where the kennel was before, um, which could be beneficial in that there is still some screening there. Um, you know, obviously they don't want to do as much screening as we had originally talked about because they're only intending to use it for a year. Um, so I just wanted to give that to you and just see if you are okay with us moving forward with them, um, with this shorter timeframe in mind and, and potentially likely less screening.
Did we do revegetation out on that site that they'd be disturbing or it's still a disturbs, like where the?
I don't think we did anything.
We, we tore down the structure and then we essentially looked down a couple of things that were sort of outside the structure. And then we blocked driveways. We actually left, left all the screening in place. That has certainly matured in the last four years.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thoughts on this? Okay with the one year?
Yes.
Is the DNR site right on the highway where you see it or is it tucked back?
It's right here. So it's like in the middle of that parcel.
So it'll be screened.
Behind those trees. Yeah. I mean.
We had mentioned last time about reaching out to the neighbors about this project and I didn't know where we were on that.
We have not. We did talk about that.
Do you know why it's only one year? I mean, is it just because next year they're going to just come again? Or do they have a plan?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. And we have a meeting with them on Friday to understand more what they're looking for. Cause they still need a long. I don't know if that's another site.
Right.
They, I guess the other piece I should mention is they are running up against some kind of time constraints with the county and their process. And so they, part of it may be just trying to get in what they need to get in for this winter and then working on something more robust for the following year.
All right. This side's thumbs up. You guys okay with the one year?
Sounds like it's fine. We will do that outreach next.
That's it for town manager and staff, uh, report of mayor and council members. So we did not have CAS, but we did have MMC. Um, we're partnering with the county on evacuation plan assessment. Um, not just the county, but all the towns and the county, um, which will be great because it sounds like it's more than just a wildfire evacuation plan. It's really like a hazard plan.
All hazards.
All hazards. And so it will help us deal with everything from when the highways shut or when interstate I-70s shut down and what happens with all those people to wildfire to, I don't know, what else, what other things we have here. But, um, it should give us a lot of information and it'll be a great baseline for if we needed to do anything, um, additional. And then we also had a very heart wrenching presentation from Treetop. Um, they're the child advocacy group that Steve I'm sure is very acquainted with and actually Marika too. Um, but I just wanted to say, I think it's really important that we continue to fund that organization. They obviously, hopefully will get more long-term funding from the state and federal sources. But in the meantime, they have like kind of a two-year gap. We've already talked about the money that we decided to give them and they didn't ask for more. But just really think that's a, and Marika and Steve know better than I, but seems like a very important resource for our community. And we're lucky to have them right here. I mean, people from Eagle have to come over here and all over. So.
And I'll just add, I mean, they were teetering on having to close their doors. And, um, Dave stepped in to help look at their finances. And it's now, I think, the president of the board. Um, so he does it when you ask. It was a, a learning opportunity for me when I asked Dave to do something this big. He's from Texas and it's this big. Um, but he, you know, he and Amy Olivera essentially have just completely turned that organization around to a, a place where, you know, I don't, I think, um, most people would say they're not, uh, in danger of having to close their doors now. But it took a lot of work by Dave and Amy. And I just want to call Dave out for that because he did mean some.
Well done, dude. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. I think that was it for MMC. That's all we had listed. So Breck Open Space Advisory.
I got nothing. Just kidding. Um, we had such a great meeting on July 15th. It was, um, it started with a site visit to Toad Alley where, um, uh, we, we just had an amazing tour with staff on the new alignment that will be happening. And more importantly, how would I restore the area that has been disturbed, um, with the current trail? And so the new alignment's fantastic. Um, they're going to scarify the, uh, the land, the, the trail that is there right now, which is a really fun term that I may kind of use as much as I can. Um, and then, uh, remove all the turnpikes to allow, you know, the flow of water. And, uh, it, it was, it was great. You know, we got caught in the rain and the whole thing. And, uh, it was good to see Dave Rossi and short sleeve shirt and shorts, uh, shivering and, you know, getting a jacket from Nikki, which was always fun. Um, but, uh, we also had discussed a little bit about Tetra Tech's, uh, passive treatment at the Wellington Ore, uh, Ore. Um, there was a meeting a couple of days later with stakeholders. So we're, there's a lot of interest from BOSAC to keep an eye on that and see what that turns into and how that affects, uh, our, our community. Uh, there was a lot of talk about, um, the signage, trail signage plan that we are in the midst of now. We got a great presentation earlier today, uh, from Merge and, uh, really excited to see their stakeholder engagement. And as I said earlier, I think that they are absolutely the, a, a great company for this. Uh, sometimes it's nice to bring someone from, that's not from around here to have a new, a new set of eyes on. And these folks are from Pennsylvania, although obviously they've done work in Whistler and everywhere in between. But, uh, it'll be great. One of, uh, one of the more fun parts of the, the meeting was that prior to, um, Monday, staff sent out, um, a, the GIS and said, basically opened it up to BOSAC saying, draw in your dream trails and your dream connections. And it was something where it really, you know, and it was obvious and it was stated that not everything is going to happen. Maybe none of it can, or a lot of it can happen because of things, but let's just, let's dream big. And there was about, I don't know, 30, 35, uh, trails or connections that were drawn in, including Copper Canyon. And, um, it was just really great to hear each, uh, representative to, you know, talk about their, their trails that they put in and why, and why it's important to them. And to, you know, there was a couple of lightbulb moments I really feel with staff going, that one, we might want to stick a pin in that. And it was just a great empowering meeting for all of, uh, the committee. And it was really fun to watch everyone, you know, as you guys know, like this is, it's, it's such a passionate group of people and, and with, uh, all their, uh, knowledge and, um, enthusiasm to see this brainstorming session was just fantastic. And so, uh, it was a great meeting and, uh, that's what we got.
Great. Sounds fun. All right. Breck Tourism, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, we're meeting Thursday.
Okay. Breck History?
Had a meeting and ran through kind of updated capital plans and kind of what priorities were for them. Um, one of the big things I think is initially they were talking about looking at redoing the, uh, yeah, basically the, the museum there at the, the Welcome Center, uh, the visitor center. And, you know, encouraged them to kind of take a step back and talk to the town about bathrooms and talk about water and talk to the BTO about the visitor center and, you know, kind of reimagine that whole, you know, if, if we're going to do any work there, let's just make sure all the stakeholders have bought in. Also expect them to reach out to BCA and, uh, and, and, and to the, the steering committee there on the master plan. So hopefully, um, yeah, that gets looked at and worked on and that, uh, we get to a good spot with, uh, with that building and get it updated and don't have three entrances. Um, so yeah, we'll see how that one evolves. And then a couple of other projects that'll, you'll see come down the pipe. Yeah, just kind of prioritize in what historic fabric they want to protect and preserve and, you know, stabilize. You know, they talked about the lorry and then, you know, looking at stabilizing up there and seeing how the parking evolves. But, uh, yeah, looking forward to, they're trying to take advantage of having the dream team, uh, available to work on structures. So you'll hear more of that, uh, when the budget gets done.
Should be well.
That is quite a team.
It is a great squad.
The Breck Creative Arts?
No meeting and no real update. Uh, it was already pointed out in the work session how the interest in the volume of people in the campus sort of died out around two o'clock. And the idea of what can we do to keep them in town longer? Don't know what the reason was that for that to happen, but something to think about.
Yeah.
Otherwise I think a successful day.
Great. Um, I do want to mention that, uh, a few of us attended the Culinary Affair fundraiser for Breck Creative Arts. And I thought it was fantastic. It was great food and really amazing, uh, restaurateur participation. Um, at least 10, maybe more, 13? Um, several restaurateurs were involved and they had great food and lots of, um, really fun imaginative drinks and, uh, really nice crowd of people. And they just had music at the end of the night. That was awesome. So I think, um, they had a very successful, uh, event. Hopefully it was a successful, um, fundraising opportunity. And I think all of us are really looking forward to seeing it come back next year. So when that comes through, make sure you get your tickets because it would be great. Um, CML Advisory Board?
We have not had a meeting and the next one won't be till September.
Okay. Social Equity, we had our.
Um, they covered.
Yeah, I actually sat in. So thank you, Carol. It was great to sit in on that again. And I was very impressed with Flor in that environment as well. Um, touch base on the accessibility plan that we're working on. Um, worked on the, the equity lens. They, they reported out their, um, getting close to finalizing that. Um, and they were presenting that to the leadership team that were preparing to present that. Kelly, they're very excited about their meet with the mayor on the 20th, um, of August. And the mindfulness hike they're going to do with BCA, um, bilingual, yeah, by the way, which would be great. Um, uh, they, we got a report from Melissa, the BTO, um, on Ten Mile Pride, on the Ten Mile Pride event, which sounded to have been just a hugely successful event. Said the fireside chat at the RMU was, was well attended and, and went well. Um, community gathering with yoga said they had over a hundred people, which is great. Uh, there's a great media presence, which is fantastic. Uh, it was described as a wholesome, talent-filled, um, display, I mean, very, very present display. It was great. Um, and the BTO is developing a five-year strategic plan for, for growing it. And instead of just trying to blow it up next year is to really strategically plan it to, to grow it. Um, so tons of positive input, which was great. Talked about the land acknowledgement, which was a great discussion. Um, just, you know, the, the, trying to strike the balance between having it overused and, and losing some of its, um, effectiveness and, and, um, strength of meaning. And, um, finding the right times and places to use it, which I thought was great. And it was a really good discussion. Uh, yeah, no, it was, it was a, uh, really good meeting. It was great to attend. That group's very impressive, getting a lot of work done.
And I think it, I don't want to gloss over what you said about Flor. She is amazing. She did an incredible training here today and, um, I know that she's impressed that group and you guys a lot. So I just wanted to acknowledge what a, just another great team member, joining the town of Breck team. Happy to have her. All right. Arts and cultural master plan. Do you have anything, Jane?
Um, so I want to definitely call out Julia. Uh, she had called, uh, was able to facilitate two different meetings on her vacation while she was on vacation, which not that that should be encouraged, but I appreciate her dedication and understand the, the, the timetable that we're on. But yes, we did have a second interview with a consultant, uh, just to kind of go through some, uh, follow-up questions. And, uh, and so I think that there's going to be, uh, we should be able to announce, um, who that contract, who that contract is going to be and who that subcontractor, that consultant will be, uh, shortly here. So we're excited.
Looking forward to knowing. Okay. Other matters?
I've got one. Um, was chatting with Flor about this and obviously the Summit Foundation has been supportive of the school and kind of their work, encouraging this work in the trades. And, and, you know, Tom and Doug and the whole team at the school district have been crushing that. Um, I believe in the construction program, they built a tiny house. I would love, I was chatting with Flor about this on the walk today. I'd love for the town of Breck to see about finding some land and maybe having them build housing that gets lived in and used. Um, seeing if we can kind of push that up to where the high school kids are building houses for our residents. So something to chew on in housing.
Would be. Anybody else? Well, I just, I do want to, um, Audrey got a couple of big grants. Aubrey, sorry. Aubrey got a couple of big grants for the town that, um, like three million dollars in grants over the last couple of weeks. So I just wanted to recognize really all the staff's efforts because a ton of background work has to go into applying for those. But obviously Aubrey is the one putting it in the package and finding out what needs to be answered and how to answer it best to attract them. And um, I think that was hugely successful. So, um, hopefully we can make sure that, well, I'll just make sure and thank her next time.
Doing a great job of convening all of the people that need to be involved when we're putting together grants and making sure that we are coordinating, so we're not, we don't have one department and another department applying the same grant and things like that. James and his team, um, did a great job on the water meter application, which was a million dollars. And then, um, Housing and Aubrey worked together on the, um, one point nine million for Runway. So it, and Dola is happy with us. So that is a really good place to be right now.
I have one more. All right. Um, sorry, Todd, I'm really trying. We got an email from a young kid several weeks ago about a disc golf course, and I just wanted to follow up on that and just hear. I realize I've definitely talked to Scott and picked his brain a few times, that it's actually a very impactful sport and it requires quite a lot of land. But I don't know if, um, how people felt. I just don't want to let a, you know, teenagers' letter to council go completely un- discussed and considered. So we don't have to do that tonight, but I would like to maybe talk to each of you, or maybe we'll talk about it next council meeting about the level of interest in looking at something like that. Plan to see. All right. Anything else? Shannon?
No, we're good.
All right, meeting adjourned.